This is Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer for the Township of West Orange. Welcome to the Township Council meeting for May 2nd, 2023. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Council President Tammy Williams.
Good evening, West Orange. Today is Tuesday, May 2nd, the 11th meeting of the West Orange Town Council. Madam Clerk, would you read our opening statement?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 23rd, 2022, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2022. Councilwoman Castelina?
Present.
Councilwoman Gabber Michael?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present.
Mayor McCartney.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This evening, we would like to begin our conference agenda acknowledging and recognizing a few wonderful members of the West Orange community. And with that, we will begin with Mrs. Carol Somerville Williams on the occasion of her 107th birthday. I think that alone needs a round of applause. Mr. Fagan, before we proceed, if possible, could you please check the Zoom audience and see if there is a shoo-shoo on the line? And if so, we'd like to give her an opportunity to speak. She may not be available, but if she is, I'd like to recognize her. That's the mother of Ms. Williams. Unfortunately, no relation, because I certainly would like to say that that's in my genes to live to be 107 years old. Yes?
Council President, I am not seeing that name.
Okay, no problem. Then we will go ahead and proceed. Whereas Carol Somerville Williams has turned 107 years old and was celebrated by her family, and whereas she was the granddaughter of a former slave, Annie Bethel. Her mother died when she was an infant, so she was initially raised by her grandmother. She moved often from one family to the next. She has lived with her daughter in West Orange, New Jersey since the beginning of the pandemic. Prior to that, she was living alone in Medea, Pennsylvania. And whereas Carol lived through the Spanish Flu, polio, now the Corona world coronavirus, World War I, World War II, the Korean, Vietnam, and Gulf Wars, and she lived during the Depression and multiple recessions. And whereas she got married in 1937, had five children, widowed at 27, and all graduated high school with three getting masters and a doctorate. She has lost four sons, Raymond, Lonnie, Carl, and Paul, with her only daughter remaining. She has eight grandchildren, 13 great-grandchildren, and one great-great-grandchild. She remarried in 1979 to Theodore Williams. He passed after only two years of marriage. Whereas Carol was a member of the NAACP and an active participant in the Civil Rights Movement. Her father was a chauffeur at the Capitol in Washington DC for Senator Vandenberg and many others from Congress for more than four decades. She graduated high school, excuse me. Thank you. And attended Chaney University, the first HBCU, historically black college or and university. Three of her children also attended Chaney University, located eight miles from Medea, Pennsylvania, where they all lived at the time, and she lived from 1934 to 2020. And whereas she was a domestic worker, crossing guard, meter officer, and community supporter activist. And most of all, she was a mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, and great-great-grandmother. Now therefore, Mayor Susan McCartney and the members of the Town Council of West Orange in recognition of Carol Somerville Williams' 107th birthday, wish her the happiest of days and many more to come. Thank you. I would also add that not only is she receiving this proclamation from West Orange, she received a proclamation from the state of New Jersey and from the President's office. So she has been celebrated at 107 years old. It is a blessing to be 107 years old, and we salute Ms. Williams. Thank you.
Council President, if I may just add one thing?
Certainly.
The son that you mentioned in the proclamation, Lonnie, the Law and Justice Complex in City of Orange, our next-door neighbor, is named after him for his many years of service to that community. He is a, he was a leader in that space, and I am proud to say that many of the Pole Hills have graciously allowed me to serve as pastor of Ebenezer Baptist Church for many years. That family goes all the way back about 100 years in Ebenezer Baptist Church.
Wow.
So yeah, we're grateful for her and the contributions they continue to make.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We have to get her on the Older Adults Advisory Board.
I don't think that's gonna happen. I don't think that's gonna happen, but thank you. Thank you very much. All right, moving right along, we'll present this to her and take that. So she'll have it beside her many accolades. We also have a mayor's proclamation for Municipal Clerk's Week. And Madam Clerk, if you will meet our mayor at the podium.
So good evening. Though I do have a new administrative assistant, Sherry Quirk, who's been doing an outstanding job since day one that I was elected mayor. I still rely on Karen for so many things, so I am so happy to be able to give this proclamation. The Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of our local government, exists throughout the world. And the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. Not that you're old, but the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all other levels. And professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality, impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Community. Professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. It is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of our Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Susan McCartney, Mayor of the Township of West Orange, do recognize the week of April 30th through May 6th as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our own Professional Municipal Clerk, Karen Cornabel, and to all the other Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
I think we all should be in this photo. And next on our conference agenda is a presentation regarding PSENG's Energy and Cost Savings Program for our community. Sarah Raper from Montclair State University, please.
Thank you again, Council President. So I have been the Sustainable Jersey Coordinator for the Township for many years, and PSENG and Sustainable Jersey came out with a partnership with Montclair State University. Sarah, last year, I just want to say, last year, we had a student, Kimberly Hill, that gave a presentation on diversity in our boards and commissions, and I was so pleased with the results that helped with our certification and the results showing that it really is a microcosm of our town serving on our boards. This year, the partnership is with energy efficiency. And this past semester, Sarah has been given public presentations. The first one was at the Earth Hour, right? So at the West Orange Environmental Commission Earth Hour event on March 15th at the Thomas Edison National State Park. And that was televised to reach our whole community. And the second one was at the West Orange Hispanic Foundation Monthly Meeting on March 31st. So this will be the end of her semester. And this energy outreach program is something you can sign up for, everyone. It started out for low and moderate income, and PSENG revised the program to reach all residents that if you would like them to come and do an audit or an assessment, they would give you helpful tips on how to save money and save energy. So that's why Sarah is here today to give that presentation to all of us. And I also wanted to say that the township was awarded another Sustainable Jersey Grant in partnership with PSENG, and this was just awarded a few days ago. And this is for Energy Efficiency and Cost Savings Program for commercial businesses in town. So we just got the information yesterday, and we will work with the Environmental Commission to launch that program soon.
So my name is Sarah Reaper. I am a Montclair student, and this is my presentation on the energy outreach program. So the program is in cooperation with the Comfort Partners Program through Sustainable Jersey.
Put the microphone just a little bit closer. Yes, thank you.
Comfort Partners is a free energy-saving and energy education program. They help income-eligible customers save energy and money while increasing safety and comfort. So why should you participate? You will save money, reduce your energy use, reduce your utility bills, make your home healthier and more comfortable. And you can participate by checking your eligibility through the Comfort Partners website. Enroll, and then from there, you'll have a home visit with an action plan and a partnership agreement, followed by the installation. And the Sustainable Jersey PSENG Partnership, this is for everybody. This isn't just the low and moderate income. They recently announced their program to support local action to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in New Jersey. The program offers wraparound support, customized resources, and flexible funding options for municipalities to take action that lower emissions in their buildings and help residents and local businesses do the same. So it allows municipalities, residents, and businesses to better manage their energy use and leverage PSENG's high-impact, cost-effective, energy-efficiency programs and incentives. Increasing energy efficiency for local businesses, residents, and government facilities provide economic, environmental, community, and health benefits. Municipalities that are served 100% by PSENG for electricity and natural gas are eligible to apply. So from here, you can check your eligibility through this website, or you can call the toll-free phone number. After the enrollment and during the home visit, a certifies Building Performance Institute contractor will reach out and set up your visit. From there, they will go over the Comfort Partners Program once again, conduct a home energy audit, including safety and efficiency tests, discuss how your home uses energy, as well as how the program can help you. At the end of the home visit, the contractor will develop an action plan for you and your home, and from there, you will fill out a partnership agreement. After the home visit, you will develop a scope of work, return to your home, and install the energy-saving measures. And what would get installed are cost-effective, energy-efficient measures such as energy-efficient lightings, water heaters, refrigerators, energy-saving thermostats, insulation, air sealing, duct sealing, and repair, and more. And then some energy-saving tips. Drafts can cause you to lose heat in your home through leaky windows, doors, electrical outlets, light switches, and other openings, like a fireplace damper. Reducing air leaks could cut 10% from an average home energy bill. And while you are asleep or out of the house, you can turn your thermostat back 10 to 15 degrees for eight hours and save around 10% a year on your energy bills. And lastly, in my opinion, most important, turn it off. Don't leave the video game on pause, the computer in sleep mode, or the cell phone charger plugged in when you are done with it. Those electronics are still using energy even if you're not using them. And for more information about Comfort Partners Program and the PSENG Program.
Thank you. And next, we have council liaison announcements. Councilwoman Scarpah?
Great. Okay, the Environmental Commission has a couple of nice activities this month. On May 7th, we're putting our bio-retention rain gardens in a number of schools. Anyone who wants to get involved in that can call, can call or get in contact with the Environmental Commission. Most of them are with the schoolchildren. On May 21st, we have our Second Chance Toys, where we recycle the toys, and that's a really fun family event as well. A great chance to get rid of all your old toys and give them to a good cause. The Older Adults Advisory Board, we are on a roll. I am so thrilled to let you know that we have an incredible, talented group of people. We have a vet, we have a lawyer, we have a social worker, we have our very own Rosary Morelli. We hopefully out the tweet and will be joining us. And we are all so committed to elaborating all of the intergenerational activities at Toby Cat Center. So we're working on that now, and I think in the next six months, there's going to be a lot of good things to come.
Paula? Thank you. Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you. Economic Development Committee is eagerly anticipating the release of an RFP for an Economic Development Officer. We've gone through several rounds of edits, submitted it back to the mayor. So we're excited about the opportunity to have someone focus on economic development in town, leverage the existing assets we have, help our local businesses, and help us find the right mix of businesses and attract them, as well as state and federal support where appropriate, so that we can increase the commercial ratables in town and obviously support the existing commercial properties that are here. Nothing from insurance or really from joint meeting or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilwoman Gabber Michael?
West Orange Arts Council has their Earth Day and Mother's Day exhibit that's running through May 27th. They have their reception this past Saturday. To learn more about the West Orange Arts Council, please visit W O arts, with an S at the end, dot org. Regarding the John Renna House Board, there's a new gazebo patio project. Mr. Smaraldom at the contractor secured a blueprint. The gazebo is about 95% complete. And the gazebo should be completed at the end of this month. And we just need to secure some prices for benches. The next board meeting is this coming Tuesday at 9:30 AM. For the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, we are meeting next Wednesday, May 10th at 7:30 PM. And then for open space, the next meeting is June 1st. The May meeting was canceled due to scheduling conflicts. The chair sent a request to our Township Clerk and Attorney asking for an appraisal for the Essex Lacrosse Train Center located at 12-22 Woodland Avenue. The Open Space Commission would like to preserve this historically significant site. Thank you, and that concludes my liaison announcements.
Councilwoman Castelino? Thank you, Council President. So get ready, folks. June 3rd is coming very, very quickly. It is our street fair day, also known as Edison's Birthday Day Celebration. So the museum will be free of charge. Ms. Brill and her team has been very, very busy with acquiring sponsors. There's over 125 food vendors and food trucks and vendors. I think about 15 to 20 food and the rest, all the crafters and the retailers. So it's an exciting day, great turnout this year. After 6,000 people visiting Main Street last June, there was a quick signups this year. So with success brings more success. So we hope the weather cooperates and all will go well. There'll be, the Beer and Wine Garden will be back, live bands, strolling entertainment. And let's not forget the beautiful car show in front of the Edison Lofts. And this year, there'll be a rock climbing wall sponsored by one of our new businesses on Harrison Avenue, Uptown Screen Printing. We're excited to have them. Harrison Avenue is also in the Sid and Downtown Alliance. And if you've been traveling up and down Harrison Avenue lately, there are a few new businesses there opening up, and we're really excited about that, working with all our new business owners as well. I'm going to be coming back to the council with, you know, requests to fix that parking lot and Abe Lando Parking Lot in Torrey Corner. At our meeting two weeks ago, the support is there. Our business owners are signing a petition in full disclosure, because they want to make sure that we open up that driveway, and they're very passionate about that. So I'll be bringing that to you next month to show you that the support is there, because I just, you know, don't want you folks just to go by what I have to say. But, but yeah, parking is a must, and it's something that I keep driving Mr. Gross crazy about, because we need to address that now. We can't wait for redevelopment. We have to help the business owners that are there now. And this is one of the big ask on their list. So hopefully, we could work that out this year, even with the stressful budget year. But downtown is still doing their part. They received another cooperative marketing grant award. They didn't receive the award yet, but got awarded that. So yeah, we're just going to keep working it. Public Relations Commission, we had our meeting last month, we're meeting again next Thursday night, but they're getting ready to help at the street fair. They'll be helping with the selfie station. And they're also working on a survey to send out to our realtors. After the Realtor Open House, we wanted to get important feedback from our Realtor community to see what worked, what didn't work at the presentation. That's about it. And I just want to publicly thank Amy Gallantin for her part in organizing the Israeli flag raising. A lot of folks came out for support. I know it was a lot of comments on at the past couple of meetings, but it's great to see how passionate all so many of our residents are. And we appreciate all her efforts in organizing that this year. And last, I just want to add, great presentation, Sarah, and always great to see our Montclair State interns come here. And, but I just want to share something on a personal level with our residents. This past year, I had had some HVHC new boiler put into my home. And with PSENG's program, you're able to finance that with them. So there is, you know, definitely look up if you're doing a big project in your home and how different ways to finance it. And I just want to share that with you, because as you know, with the economy and inflation, it's hard and hard to do these projects that are needed, especially in February, when your boiler goes and your sub-zero degrees have no heat overnight and the pipes burst. So yeah, so you want to know that there's alternative ways. And so we thank you for coming here to share that and definitely look into it, folks. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. And lastly, happy to report that the Planning Board met on last week, and will also have a meeting again. One of our cannabis entities on Central Avenue did receive approval from the Planning Board to move forward. So we are excited, and hopefully, when they go to the state, they will receive also favorable passage of, or acceptance of their state application for cannabis. So we are excited that we may possibly have entities opening in the very near future. The Municipal Alliance Committee also met on April 18th to discuss the second quarter and funding opportunities. We are excited and working with the high school to put together a mental health and wellness summit in September of this year. So please stay tuned for additional information on that. And with the Historic Preservation Commission, their next meeting is next week, Wednesday. And regrettably, one of the grants that had been applied for, the CLG grant for a federal fiscal year 2023. Unfortunately, West Orange was not selected to receive funding, but we will continue to push forward with preserving our historic properties in West Orange. That study would have helped us with identifying and selecting additional properties, but the work will continue, and we will continue to apply for grant opportunities. Also excited to report that our Juneteenth celebration this year has been slated for June 17th. We hope to have many of our partners, organizational partners, participate. West Orange African Heritage Organization, the Luna Stage, the Arts Council. Our local and elected officials also will be participating in the flag raising that will start here at Town Hall at 11:00 AM with a festival on the lawn with vendors, music, and additional entertainment. And we will continue to update the public on all those activities and hope that you will find it not robbery to come out and celebrate Juneteenth this year. This will be our third celebration in West Orange. That completes our liaison announcements. I'm Madam Clerk, if you go into our council agenda.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 23rd, 2022, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2022. Councilwoman Castelina?
Present.
Councilwoman Gabber Michael?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford? Councilwoman Scarpah?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present.
Mayor McCartney? Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? The council is now in their public meeting.
If there is anyone who would like to have a copy of the agendas for this evening, they are on the table in front of us. That gives you an update on all of the ordinances and resolutions that we will be discussing this evening. We usually begin our council agenda with just information and public comment. For those who may not be familiar with our practices, please, after Mr. Fagan introduces a public comment, make your way to the podium, state your name and address, and each of you have five minutes for your remarks. Mr. Fagan?
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I'd like to start with a slide that you had sent me, Council President. This will ultimately be This will ultimately be helpful to our to our West Orange residents. This is for homeowner, for help for a homeowner, for realtor, community care. This is perhaps, Council President, you'd like to elaborate on this?
For sure. So any resident is eligible for an opportunity to apply to get some exterior renovations, improvements done to their home. This is a very simple application process. You just send it in and submit it, and they will select based on the number of applications that are received and, of course, the participants in the community, in the real estate community, and identify those homeowners that we will come and help them rejuvenate the exterior of their homes. No interior renovations are done, but certainly this is a way for the Realtor community to give back. We have not had an opportunity to identify any homes in West Orange. So I am very, very hopeful that there has to be someone in West Orange who could utilize the helping hand and certainly the real estate community, as well as our council colleagues, I'm sure, would come out and support this event. So please, please apply. If you would like me to send this information to you directly, just send me an email, council@westorange.org, and I will absolutely get this direct link sent to anyone that is interested. We'll also put this information on the flyer, information on our television networks for any of our seniors who may not actually have internet access or the capacity to watch this meeting. This is something that is actually really engaging and just a helping hand to the communities.
Thank you, Council President. I may point out that this event will take place September eighth. However, the submit application deadline is June ninth, which is fast approaching. I'd like to start to inform our residents that I two eighty east at exit six is closed. That's the Laurel Avenue exit, and that's only going east. There's going to be stormwater repair there. It's going to be closed for several weeks. It shouldn't come as too much of a problem for our residents. You can continue to Pleasant Valley Way, but you might want to add some extra time on to your trip. Just be aware that Laurel Avenue exit six is closed. Also, I received this information this morning that there will be mosquito spraying by the County of Essex, of course, weather permitting. It's taking place tomorrow from seven AM to seven PM, which is essentially all day, possibly Thursday. And you see that West Orange is one of the towns there that is affected, and it's going to be an aerial spraying, which means you might see this helicopter in the air. Be not alarmed. And if you have any questions, I have a contact number up here for the Essex County Mosquito Control. That's nine seven three two three nine three three six six, extension two four eight zero. Also, tomorrow at the Ginny Dunkle Pool, there's going to be blood pressure screenings. COVID-nineteen boosters will be available. This is in conjunction with the County of Essex, RWJ Barnabas Health. And this is a county-sponsored event. We've done this before. This is tomorrow, eleven AM to one PM at the pool. Also, the Oz Pack Pleasant Valley Productions, the season is kicking off. This information is on our website, westorange.org. I encourage all our residents to go on there and check out the upcoming events. There's got to be something there for everyone. We also have Sunday, May seventh, call for volunteers to help plant native species in the new bio-retention rain garden. The systems will be at Liberty Roosevelt, Redwood, Kelly and Washington Schools. And you can register by emailing mayor@westorange.org and indicate the school where you can help. The state of the township address was held this last April twenty-sixth at the Wiltshire Grand Hotel, and the video of that event, which I might add, was posted three hours after the event, is available for viewing at your convenience at westorange.org. Nothing says Arbor Day like planting trees on Forest Avenue at Redwood School. And earlier this week, Mayor McCartney was present and welcomed by the students and essentially oversaw the planting of trees, as I mentioned, on Forest Avenue. As Councilwoman Castelino mentioned, this April twenty-sixth, we had a tremendous turnout. You can see in the video in the upper right-hand corner there on the steps of Town Hall for the seventieth celebration of Israel. You can see that Councilman Rutherford, Councilwoman Gerber Michael and Councilwoman Scarpah in the picture there. Council President Williams was also there, and Councilwoman Castelino was also there. I did not get an opportunity to get a picture of all of them, but it was a great turnout. And speaking of flag raisings, on May fifteenth, we have a Haitian flag raising at five PM on the steps of Town Hall. Quickly, I just want to mention, I think I've mentioned this at previous council meetings, we are hiring. There are open positions for in Town Hall and for school crossing guards. This information is available on our website.
Six PM. It's been changed to six PM for the Haitian flag raising.
Okay, the Haitian flag raising has been changed to six PM. Certainly, everyone is welcome to come earlier and partake of the the cultural event that that certainly will be. We have the Memorial Day observance coming up on five twenty-nine, May twenty-ninth, at ten AM in front of Town Hall. And I just want to quickly point out that last year, you might remember that we had Gordon J. Hanson. He was a World War II soldier, West Orange resident, who a parking lot was named after. His high school trumpet was returned to West Orange, and it was, caps was played on in his honor. Well, I have an update to the story that this past weekend, a ceremony was held in Normandy, France for Gordon J. Hanson, where he was buried. He never, his body was never returned home following the end of World War II. And these are two distant cousins of his. And you can see that Margie is holding the book that I put together that has all Gordon J. Hanson's military service records in there. So I just wanted to update everyone on that story. Mr. Pogliisi is not here this evening. He is, I think he mentioned he had something important to do, like attending the gala at Turtleback Zoo. So he could not be here. But he wanted to mention, he wanted me to mention in his absence that the fishing derby is coming up. And you can go on the Essex County website, and there are various states and various locations where this is taking place. Finally, if you, if you want to email a council, council@westorange.org, that you can email all the council members. And anything that you see here tonight, you can contact me at the above phone number or at westorange.org. You should be able to find all the information. Council President, I think I've taken too long, but that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any members in council chambers who would like to address the public? Please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor McCartney and town council. My name is Denise DiBernardo. I'm a communications officer with the West Orange Police Department, and I'm also the shop steward of Local Five Sixty. When I was spoke on this March seventh, I had requested if we would be able to be advised of the study that was going on in regards to shared services with Livingston. We found out the other day that it was on the patch that this was going to happen again. The study was going to be brought up again on this, at this meeting. I'm just curious as to why we weren't informed of the study and happening again. What changed between the meeting two months ago and now? And we you know, we have some questions. You know, what's the potential tax saving? Is there going to be to the residents if this is found feasible? Are we going to be considered public employees? Or are we going to be working for a private company? Are we going to have a pay increase or decrease? Are we going to keep our pension? What are the shifts going to consist of? And is this still going to be taking place at Livingston's Communication Center? Not sure if you're aware, but West Orange and Roseland are the two agencies that are involved in this, that dispatch for both police, fire and EMS, where South Orange, Roseland and Maplewood dispatch police, but they branch out to Rens, which is at University in Newark, or EMS. You know, how will seniority play in this? Are our jobs going to be secure? Are you going to be taking everybody over, or is there going to be some dispatchers losing their jobs? That's pretty much for it right now. Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the, yes, please come forward. I'll take this. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't.
I was here for more.
No problem. No problem. Go right ahead. Just your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Council President, Council. My name is Nicholas Jamie. I do not live in West Orange. I live in Jersey City. But what I am, I am the business rep for this bargaining unit. We represent close to three thousand members under Teamster Local Five Sixty, but there's about fifty-five thousand members, Teamster members throughout New Jersey, to where each local has their own effective bargaining unit they represent. So with that being said, I am a representative, but I'm also the political coordinator for Teamster Local Five Sixty to where we just had, we put together different elections. We support different members. Just in Garfield alone, we ran a ticket against a bunch of incumbents to where we protected the interest of our bargaining unit. We wasn't even asking for much to where we put a slate together and we solely want our slate won. So with all that being said, you know, we have a small bargaining unit. My interest here is to protect this bargaining unit to where this bargaining unit's interest is to protect West Orange. To my understanding, just coming into, into representing this bargaining unit, Harold Welsh was the original business agent, but I'm coming on as the new rep. They do a lot of work for this, for this township. They just don't do police dispatching. They also do EMS. They also do fire. Now, to elaborate, there was an article that was put out on the patch to where it was going to be revoted for this study by this council. It was put on the patch. And after talking to Councilwoman, I mean, Council President, she said the information was inaccurate, and she was going to reach out to the patch to recant that. So I had a totally different speech, right, until, you know, until now, you know. So I do appreciate, you know, your statement, Council President. You know, I do hope to meet every council, council man, woman, individually, have a meeting and actually build our relationship here in West Orange because you have a very important bargaining unit here that helps protect West Orange, and I hope to build on it. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you and your coming. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sharon Feinsod. I live at five sixteen Smith Manor Boulevard.
I'm sorry.
Thank you to those of you who gave me your time last week and today on the phone.
Would you just please repeat your last name? I'm sorry.
F E I N S O D. Okay, I'm here to talk about two issues. The first one is not going to go away while I live in West Orange, and that is the issue with Decamp Bus and New Jersey Transit. I'm going to try to follow my notes. They're kind of, just deal with me. So anyway, first of all, the bus is being presented or has been presented as a bus for working people. It's not just a bus for working people. People who live in West Orange may not work. They may be retired. That doesn't mean that they're on Medicare. It doesn't mean that they are impaired and can't use a bus. They go to New York to meet friends. I still go to meet my elementary school friends from Newark four, five, six times in a month. Okay, that's number one. People go to medical appointments, to big medical centers in New York. They go to cultural events. They go to the theater. There's so many shows I could tell you to go see now, and you can get half-price tickets at the ticket trailer on forty-seventh Broadway. There are so many things that that bus helps. It's an experience to take grandchildren who've never been on public transportation. All they know is being carpooled in this world. It is also, it makes it difficult. There are there were our seniors who were taking that bus for four dollars and thirty-five cents by getting a New Jersey Transit book at Port Authority, which is spotless and clean and where you can go to get some ideas for some more stores. It, it it is a, was a selling and marketing point for the residents of Crownview Manor and the Villas because people buy and sell there because there is direct transportation there. Everybody got dissed, and we got caught, all of us in West Orange, got caught behind the eye on this one. It also was a reduction in traffic pollution, the high cost of driving. My husband and I, we go in, we want to go to the show. We say the ticket is half-priced. We'll pay for the parking. But everybody can't do that, and they should be able to get a bus. My mother never lived in suburbia. She only lived on public transportation, even in Melbourne, never lived where she could not walk and have access to life. There is a need for the Township Committee. I request that you make a meeting, you set up a meeting with the County Board of County Commissioners and Essex County Joe DiVincenzo, who really can make things happen as he has at the zoo and the skating arena and the climbing arena and the paddle boats, which I've been on even as a senior. And get this, get the state senators. Get Nick Skatari. He was my student. Get Governor Murphy. There is a solution that is doable. And if you can't find it, I'll bet you Tom Moran can at the Star Ledger because there is something not right about this, that there is no public transportation. And guess what? The people in Montclair, I would, there is no reason for me to have to take a bus at eight-thirty in the morning. I took the bus at nine-twenty-five when it was still running after COVID. Prior to COVID, it was ten-twenty-five. Well, guess what? Now, who's going to take a bus at eight-fifteen in the morning? And the only bus that's out there is the community coach at the rink, but then I have to drive to the rink and I have to get on that early. Okay, let's skip that one. Enough with the bus. Popeye and Sonic. I know that you cannot discuss the variances, and I understand the laws. However, you need as a town council to invest in the cost of a slash marketing engineer who goes out and is not a landlord hunter because landlords only care about who pays the rent in the shopping mall. They don't care if we live or die. They want the rent paid. Get yourselves a marketing engineer who will go out and check out places that, check out stores, communities, not just fast food junk. Feed the kids on the way home from the high school. Now they'll have Chipotle, they'll have Sonic, they'll have this one, they'll have that one. You want to talk about kids eating healthy? You want to talk about people not having diabetes? Right. The owners have the right to sell their property to whom they want. I understand that. But the zoning board, the zoning board, five more seconds, the zoning board can hold them to every minute detail.
Thank you, Ms. Feinsod.
Do I get another crack at a different topic? Can I come back?
Only if it's an ordinance on first or on second reading.
Only if it's what?
An ordinance or resolution on second reading. We had this. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, yes, please come forward.
Linda DeLa.
Linda DiLorenzo, 91 Giordano Drive. I've been a resident for almost 38 years. I was dismayed to learn that Resolution 7123 regarding the $400,000 grant to review the possibility of entering into shared services with other municipalities was defeated. Elected officials are chosen by the public to decide on its behalf, the policies and actions to be pursued by government and are charged with acting in the best interests of his and her constituents. In doing so, elected officials are accountable to the constituents. Therefore, I respectfully request that once I'm done speaking, that each of the decenders explain their reason for voting this resolution down. As a voter who backed at least one of you who rejected the resolution, I can't help but wonder why anyone who is supposed to be doing whatever is in the best interests of the town could walk away from a free grant of $400,000. It just doesn't seem logical or fiscally responsible to me. Passing the resolution doesn't mean we will enter into any sharing of services. It's simply to research whether or not it is feasible and whether or not it makes sense to enter into the sharing of services. There are pros and cons to everything. But not doing the research for free with someone else's money is mind boggling to me. Further, based upon the current tone of the council, it is apparent to me that there is a definite desire to make our mayor's job more difficult than it should be. And therefore raises the question, why are these political games being played in our town? Do you have personal issues with the mayor? Or how our town has been run for the last two decades? I can't help but wonder how our mayor's constituents would feel if they were truly aware of the games being played here. Since our mayor was on the town council for over 20 years before being elected mayor, one has to conclude that the majority of the town was pleased with the work she did while she was a councilperson and also fully supported the platform she presented while running for mayor. In mayoral debates, she clearly indicated it was her intent to keep the town attorney, the business administrator, and the public advocate. It seems to me her constituents would be dismayed to learn she is unable to follow the platform she ran on and is unable to do the job the majority of the residents expected her to do because she's not being supported by our council. How do you think the mayor's supporters would react to finding out the current council is trying to defeat almost everything the mayor proposes? Better yet, how would her constituents, who may have also supported council members for election that implied they too supported Susan, would feel when they learn the support they counted on just isn't there? Do you really think you will have the support of Susan's constituents when you yourself come up for reelection? Do you think the majority of the voters will support you in future elections if you continue to make any form of progress difficult? I implore you to stop playing games. Please govern the way your constituents expected you to govern. Put any personal issues you have aside. Your job is to do what is best for the town. Please start governing the way we expected you to govern. I'm done and I'd like each council member, if it's permitted, who voted against this resolution, to please advise why you weren't supportive. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask that or not.
Certainly, you can ask whatever you like. Thank you. We just won't respond right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Dr. Akil Kalfani. I'm at Seven Glen Place in West Orange. I've been here for over 20 years. I want to take a slight detour from where I was actually originally going to, just because I want to kind of say something in reference to the comments we just heard from our, our previous resident. And that is that one of the things that about politics is that we, we, we need to have a counterbalance, right? So that, that not everybody who, you know, that our mayor was elected, but some people elected or voted for different people. And so you have a, a divergent of ideas and that divergence of ideas is something that, that is structured into the, the process of governance. And so that, I, I agree with her on the thing about shared services that I've been, even when I ran for office, I, I think I, I advocated for the same thing. I think that though the shared services is, is a, a, a simple thing. We have a, a state that has over 500 municipalities and over 600 boards of ads. So that, that we need to consolidate things to make that happen. But in doing so, we need transparency, right? We need to have transparency in government. And so then we need to push to make sure that there is transparency. And so that we, we ask for you all to ensure that, that, that we have a, a high standard of transparency in our process. I think there's some challenges in, in our transparency at this point and that we need to, to, to be introspective in our analysis of what we do and how we do what we do. In looking at the, the money that is, that is the township people money and that, that we voted for you all and, and, or some of us didn't vote for you all. So that there is no uniformity in who voted for whom. So that, that some people are here because we were voted in to present opposition. So I don't see it as gamesmanship. I see it as, as representing the diversity of people who have a diversity of ideas and that we need to have that kind of counterbalance in order to assume, to, to get the things happening. Because we've had situations in the past here where there has been, uh, uh, the way in which things happen were problematic. And then that we, we vote for people or we ran for office to bring about different ideas. And so that we need to make sure that we continue to push for those differences of ideas to happen. And that there's someone that is accountable and that we hold, hold the, 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 this body and, uh, uh, the, the, um, the, the executive branch, we hold them all accountable. That's what our responsibility is. We elect them to do a job, but then we also have the responsibility of coming to here. That's why we have this open space to do so and come here to push that our voices continue to be heard. Oh, I, I have a concern about the tax issue. I don't know, uh, and the budget and the tax issue. I don't know if you have a budget that's, that's getting ready to be presented today or not. But if you don't, it's your responsibility to present this, this, uh, uh, the people with a budget. Uh, how do we operate as a township without a budget? How do we, uh, and then at the same time talk about we're going to raise taxes 16%? I think that's absurd that we're going to talk about raising taxes, but we don't even know why. We don't have the basis of what that is. And if we don't have the basis of what that is, then you're not doing the job that we put you here for. And so we need you to be here doing the things that we asked you to be here for and to represent us in a way that needs to be represented. And if you're not going to do that, then you need to do something different with what, while you're here. And I'm asking that, that, that you as council, uh, 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 that you also, you know, that you struggle with the executive branch because we need that struggle, but we need transparency. We need to know if, if the, 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 the municipal attorney is, is not, uh, you don't have a contract for him, then why don't we have a contract? Right? All of these things are basic things and we need to make sure that those basic things are on the table and that, that we are voices and are represented and that we can see that we should be able to see the budget so that we can, if we want to come in, we can even talk to you about it because we don't see one. How can we talk to you about something we don't see? It's not fair. It's not, it's not ethical. And it may not be, it may be a, a legal violation. I have to look it up to find out. And if so, then, then we need to make sure that's brought to the table and addressed the same way. I know my time is coming to an end, but the other thing I want to say is that, uh, we want to know where the money is. So there needs to be a forensic accounting. Uh, we need to make sure that, that, that this is something that, that several of us have ran on before in the past is that, that we need to know, uh, where, and I know it's, it's not cheap. But I think there's something that needs to be done that hasn't been done. And we need to, the, the, the people here, we're going to push for it. We're going to fight for it. And we may have to fight with you all to get it done, but we're going to make sure that there's a, 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 a concerted effort to bring about transparency financially and otherwise. Uh, are we going to fight for it? Are we going to fight for it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in council chambers that would like to have public comment? Yes, please.
Doug Adams, Nine West Over Terrace, and been here for a while. I guess, uh, one of the things that I would like to say is, I find that we have some of the most intelligent, high-capacity people. And I've had the opportunity to live in many places in the country as a result of my military time and ministry work. And so the one thing I'm excited about is there, there are smart people in the conversation. Uh, some of the things that challenge me though are, uh, first, and I should just say this. I don't, I don't do political parties. I don't make public endorsements for people or anything else like that. But I will say that, um, I've been very pleased with most of the people who have been elected to office. And, um, I'm committed to the ideal that we support the folk that do get elected, not necessarily because I support them as an individual, but I support the place that I live in. And if the community elects someone for office, unless they have, are committing crimes violating people or in my world, um, committing sins that are intolerable, we need to, as a community, come together and try and work to move forward. I believe that the council is elected as part of the accountability structure, structure, as the doctor said very eloquently. But I also believe that they're there as well as part of the support structure. Because when things don't work, everybody who has a stake in the game is responsible for it. It's not just the mayor. If things go bad, if the taxes go high, if there are problems in town, it's the mayor, it's the council, it's everybody. It's the leaders on the school board. They affect our taxes as well. And I do believe that there's an important thing for transparency. Since I've been here, I've been to several mayoral town council or town hall meetings where they've gone and done presentations and talked about uh, what their vision is, what the circumstances are, brought the community in. When there have been challenges, I've only been to one really council-initiated conversation, and that was over a young man that got murdered in town. But I've never gone to a dynamic where the council has had to come and be accountable for the decisions that they're making. When we do public comment, they can wait, they hear what we say. And then afterwards, they can respond or not respond however they want. And the reality is, Doc, one of the things that you said, if they don't do the job that the community feels like they should be doing, the truth is there's no accountability until the next election. So the reality is we could live with two years of conflict, tension, disruption, and obstructionist politics for reasons that nobody really has to be accountable for. Because the council never has to have a town hall meeting where we get to just ask them and interact. If they don't want to take our calls, they don't have to take our calls. The mayor has to live with all of that. Office hours, town hall meetings, all of those things the mayor has to be accountable for. Because the only way to move the council's perspective is if enough people come in and say, enough with all the rancor. Let's have some reason for why we're doing what we're doing. If the, if the town attorney is not representing the council, and I heard Councilman Rutherford say that. And I have to say, I agree, the council needs representation just like everybody else. But I also agree with this, the sins of our forefathers don't necessarily fall on their sons. The mayor is a new mayor. This is her first time having the chair. Just because she sat there doesn't mean that she controlled what happened across the hallway. And so her success is our success. And to vote down, and we already know that there were contracts that were disapproved that folk had to come back and try and readdress because the reason they got disapproved weren't even valid. I don't know all the details. I know they got elected to do what they feel is right to do. So whatever they vote, that's their vote. But I do believe that when the time comes, there needs to be a space where the council is having conversations where the public can come and have dialogues about why. If we're not gonna, if we're not gonna rehire the town attorney, cool, why? If we're not gonna do the, the shared services grant for $400,000, why? If we're not gonna, why? Because that's critical for all of us. I do appreciate your service. I would not want your job, none of y'all.
Thank you.
But I do appreciate your service.
Thank you, Pastor Adams. Yes, anyone else in county? Yes, yes, please come forward. I just want to remind everyone that Ms. Morelli has honorary seating in the front row. She never partakes.
But she's being impeached. This is elder abuse, I think. Yeah.
This is elder love. This is elder love.
My God, all fire and brimstone, terrific talking, everybody. And this is what I want to see and hear in this town. Don't complain. Be a visible presence here and talk about what you don't like and your recommendations for what the town people you voted for should be doing. And I tell that to young people, old people, whatever. In fact, people are tired of hearing me, probably seeing me. But based on that fact, that only strengthens my resolve. So I'm going to be here talking all the time. And did I tell you where I live, what my name is?
No, you didn't. But since you said I was being accused of elder abuse, I wanted to say a word.
Rosary Morelli Ralph Rowe, across the street from O'Connor Park. Anyhow, I, I'm really inspired by what I'm hearing here tonight. And I was going to talk about people speaking and the importance of when you speak, your opening statement has to grab your audience. And I was going to say that mine now has become one where I say, I know I'm the oldest person in this room tonight.
Now, in the room, yes.
I like that. Anyway, I, I really, the whole spectrum that I was going to talk about, I've changed my mind because again, I'm really impressed with the people who spoke. And all I can say is as things happen that you probably don't approve of or you have recommendations on what could be done, come up here and talk about it. Be a visible presence. They won't know what we need. And tonight, I think you found out what the people want. And this was a really good meeting. I also want to talk about the fact when Karen came here, I talked about how lucky we were that we did get her from Livingston. So I'm happy she's staying. And I'm happy that Ms. Williams, I don't know if you relate it, is older than I am. And I don't know if I could think of anything else, but people speak your feelings, come here. That's the only way that these people who control our destiny in essence. If we had a 15% tax increase, a lot of seniors can't move, they'll stay here, living on fixed income. So they have to know how we feel, what we feel, and what's actually happening out there in the town. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so very much. Yes, please come forward.
Sheila Lefkowitz, Pleasant Valley Way. I'm here tonight to ask the town council to bring back West Orange to its residents in a planful manner. Confucius said, "A man who does not plan will find trouble at his door." Knock, knock. Who's there? Trouble. Trouble who? Trouble here in West Orange. 16% tax increase trouble. Dipping too heavily into our reserves to pay for our budget trouble. Dipping too heavily into our reserves to pay for our budget trouble. Owning a golf course purchased for more than it's worth. Failing to take green acres funding as promised. And not producing enough income to be profitable trouble. Not abiding by the decisions of our elected council trouble. Not rotating the leadership of the zoning board trouble. Having declared a good functioning library as an area in need of redevelopment trouble. Attempting to build poorly conceived residential divisions, elder care facilities, and fast food restaurants. We can't even meet our obligations to provide and maintain roads and infrastructure that are existing trouble. Rushing to mark mature trees for destruction to build when more can be done to preserve them trouble. Things called streets that were built for humans to walk on and are now roads where cars speed and kill and injure pedestrians trouble. Inadequate transportation to connect town residents with essential libraries, shopping, and medical providers trouble. Not getting a cannabis resolution on the agenda so new tax-producing businesses we've given letters of support to can start up in our town trouble. Knock, knock, who's there? Town planner. Town planner who? The town planner who can help to revitalize the existing housing and business spaces before moving forward with projects that could prove redundant and costlier down the line. The town planner who can teach residents to improve their properties through practical conservation methods. The town planner who can teach us how to reimagine and invigorate our existing open spaces. The town planner who can provide us with a calculation for the return on investment of any planned projects. The town planner who can help us preserve the beautiful landscapes that remain in our town. The town planner who can help us to preserve the suburban culture and feel of West Orange for its residents rather than overdevelop it into a cityscape. The townspeople who elected and trust this town council to maintain our community as a welcoming but not overdeveloped place for families to enjoy, as my family has for some 20 years here, are knocking at your door. The townspeople who object to paying higher taxes necessitating by borrowing money at 8.11% to pay for huge increases in library, waste management, and legal fees are here knocking at your door. The townspeople who want to know what can be done to close the budget gap in 2023 beyond filling it with expected grants are here knocking at your door. We are here. Bring back West Orange to its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lefkowitz. Yes, yes.
Madam President, Council, can you hear me? We all need to be heard.
Mr. Roach? Just you?
Michael Roach?
Thank you.
Forty-nine Lennox Terrace. We all need to be heard, but we all need to see and hear each other. I want to drop the facade for a second, if you'll allow me, and get personal. They say politics, politics, well, I think it is personal. I've lived in West Orange for about 30 years now, and I prefer to look at where we are in the city as a personal investment in who I am and what the city means to me as a citizen here. And so, if you'll allow me, Susan, Bill, Asmaret, Tammy, Michelle, I know many of you, but I want you to feel my spirit as I see yours, and I know you have a very difficult job. I and we heard the words of the EMTs earlier, and we could feel the spirit behind their words. We need to understand that, of course, as we are all citizens here in the city, we're still people. And as a person, a citizen of the city, I entrust you to do your job as I will do mine as a citizen. Bear with me, please. We heard the EMTs talk about their position and how their role helps the city and what they need to do in this city. That's one side of it, the other side of it is this. Emergency Services Dispatch. What is it? What does it mean to the city? Are we living in a deficit? I don't need to know how we got there and how we got here with regards to the management of the monies in the city, but I do need to know how you plan to ameliate the looming issues with regards to emergency services. We, the proud residents of West Orange, have to go to other townships for our critical emergency services? If we do, we're the laughingstock of Essex County. Why is it a good idea to explore moving dispatch operations to another town and jeopardize public safety and sometimes response times? Even if it saves money, is that money worth the safety of West Orange residents? It always seems to come back to money. How about if it come back to the spirit of your neighbors? I trust that you will do the right thing in making your decisions and understand that you are part of this city as we are too, and we are people just like you. There's a lot of issues that we have to deal with. Town attorney, town planner, chief financial officer, these are all issues that are very important. Remember who we are. Remember, the spirit in all of us is a connection. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that everyone in council chambers who would like, yes, please, Mr. Scott?
Good evening. Brent Draper Scott, seven-five Nester Road. Ladies and gentlemen of the public, I want you to know that the zoning board is going to meet to decide the fate of the daughters of Israel project, proposed development project. That meeting will take place on May 11th. So please tune in, it will be a virtual meeting. The zoning board, just as this town council, should be meeting in person by now and should not be conducting any more of the public's business virtually. The public should still be able to tune in virtually, just as it does here, but the zoning board itself should also meet in person. Members of the council, let me begin by thanking each of you for being, for taking on the role that you take on as community leaders and as representatives. What I want to say to you tonight is, respect the law.
Mr. Scott, can you speak a little louder?
Absolutely, what part didn't we hear? What part didn't we hear?
You can just continue, thank you.
What part didn't we hear?
No, you can just continue, thank you.
Okay, can I get some more time back?
Just continue, please, thank you.
Thank you. What I want to say to this council is, please respect the law. Presently, West Orange has an individual, John Gross, serving in two paid positions in violation of the municipal code. We have an individual, Phil Neuer, serving as chair of the zoning board in violation of the municipal code, even after this council voted to uphold the law prohibiting successive terms. If this council and Mayor McCartney fail to respect the laws, so too will everyone else. As you know, sewer bills have not gone out. How about I choose not to pay my sewer bill? Or parking tickets, or next year's property taxes? I have to abide by the law, and so should this administration. Last November, Susan McCartney was elected mayor. In doing so, an overwhelming majority of the voters, 70%, voted for someone else. What this means is, Mayor McCartney does not have the majority of voters with her. This argues for reaching common ground with council members, not for insisting upon a rubber stamp. Members of the council, you are an independent body. Your job is to place a check on the executive, not go along with the executive. This administration, much as the last one, is not transparent. Aim for services but not lean bare for all to see just what was paid for. And this doesn't answer your questions of accountability. I have been in this council chamber and watched you ask the person with two jobs and the city attorney, town attorney, for answers, for receipts, and you have not received them. This administration is not upholding the laws. Not when one person is holding two jobs and you have a zoning board chair who is serving in violation of the law. Lot starts at the top. Do not raise our property taxes, not without transparency and not without the full support of an overwhelming majority of the population, which this administration does not have. And finally, regarding shared services, do not be intimidated by this administration. Though this is a new administration, it is stuck in the thinking of yesteryear, expecting you to substitute your own judgment, your own sense, and your own understanding for theirs. You are elected just as they are, you have a constituency just as they do. Use your own judgment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Is there anyone else in council chambers? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, everybody. For a moment there, I wanted to...
Excuse me, excuse me, your name and address?
My name is Yvonne Nambi Rhodes. I'm at Forty-Nine Lennox Terrace, and I've been in West Orange for about 30 years. I wanted to point, to let the council know that this room was filled with expectation for a moment. We were wrapped in, I won't say the globe, but the words of our residents that lingered on, and everything that they said was what we all felt. We talked about our taxes going 16%. We talked about the gross amount of money that we paid for Rock Springs. We've talked about our services, dispatch services. We've talked about our lawyers that are in two positions. Listen to your constituents. We are here because we want you to know that we are concerned about our city. We love our city. And everybody that spoke here today, I was filled with joy because I said, they're saying everything that I want to say. They said everything that I want to hear, everything that I have written here was said. And I want you to know that all of my, all of the residents here have come here from the bottom of their hearts, and they want you to know that every point that we've made today should be taken to heart and that we want you to hear us and answer us, not... Every time we ask a question and you can't answer it at that moment, it seems like we're missing something. So I just wanted you to know, while sitting there, listening, I felt something that I haven't felt in a while. When Rosary came, and Dr. Akil, Dr. Adams over there, and the young lady was sitting there, and our senior citizen, Rosary. I felt I was gleeful, and I looked at the council members, who, most of you, you know, I voted for, and I can say that. And I want you to know that we wait, we want you to do a job. We want you to look out for us because we're looking out for you. And that's what I want to say this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nambi Rhodes.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. Cynthia Hatley Bailey, we're here, we're all West Orange. I have my notes, I can just throw them out because everything I want to talk about, everyone talked about already. So I have to agree with you, Ms. Nambi Rhodes. One thing that they did not talk about that is dear to my heart is law enforcement. I was in law enforcement for 27 years. Port authority, great pension, my pension's in New York State. I could retire in 20 years. I believe for Jersey, you have to retire, you could retire in 25 years. When I retired, I wasn't 62 yet to get my Medicare. I was, I'm not gonna tell how old I was when I retired, but I had health insurance. And that health insurance stayed with me until I became the age of 62, and I got on Medicare. So Medicare is my primary, and the insurance I have with the board is my secondary. It's come to my attention, and hopefully you tell me that I'm wrong, that new hires, police officers, when they come on, when they retire, they're not gonna have health insurance. And that concerns me. And the main thing that concerns me, you get a young officer comes on, and I understand that we pay for their, when they get the training, we pay for that. And we'll be, they'll be on for a couple of years, and they find out that there's another department that has, oh, when I retire and I'm only 45 or 50, I'll have health insurance, they're gonna leave. They're gonna leave this job here in West Orange. And that concerns me because guys are not gonna stay. Now, the guys that are here now, this is just for new hires, but the old timers, they'll have some type of pension, if I'm correct, not pension, the health insurance. But the new retired, new people, they're not going to have that. And that's really a problem. Now, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the contract is coming up in the beginning of next year. You guys should really look at that, because you're not gonna get, good officers is gonna come here and stay. You're not gonna have guys that's gonna stay for 25 years. Because if I had a son or daughter and they want to come to the, excuse me, the West Orange and be West Orange police officer, look at the benefits, what are the benefits? And you're gonna have, where they're not gonna have when they retire at age 50, and they're not gonna have health insurance, they got a problem. They're gonna have to find another job that's going to give them health insurance. But everything else, that's all I have to say about that. But everything else that people mentioned about the taxes, that's ridiculous if we're gonna do 16% tax. I mean, that is a lot of money, that's a lot of money. And you're gonna get a lot of people that's gonna move out of town. They're gonna move out of town. Transparency, I fear for the EMTs that was here. It's a shame that they saw something in the patch and they don't know about it. That is ridiculous. We just can't have that. We can't have that. But the main thing, I wanted to talk about the budget and transparency and all that stuff. Everybody mentions, I'm not gonna repeat it. But my concern is law enforcement. Law enforcement. The morale, you want to make sure these guys have the morale, and they want to stay on this job, they want to be proud to be West Orange police officers. I don't want them to be on the job, and then five years later, they're leaving because they could get a better health insurance when they retire. And that's important. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward.
Good afternoon. Sophia Calafani, seven Glen in place. I am very concerned about the tax issue that has been discussed by everyone. When I think about the residents here, our taxes are already high. They are much, I mean, when you compare it to other cities in Essex County, they're very high. I'm very concerned about the residents here, our elderly residents who are on fixed income, who have had their homes for years and may risk losing their homes if they don't pay taxes due to tax sales annually. I'm concerned about the new folks that are coming in who are first-time homebuyers, who are starting their families and with this economic situation that we have with the rise in inflation, that this, these high taxes will push them out and put them in a further situation that most people are in today with this economic situation that we're in with the inflation. I'm concerned about our residents here and myself. It makes no sense that a tax increase can be that high. I mean, two percent maybe, three percent maybe, but not sixteen percent. That's just, that's criminal. If you were to, that's like price gouging. When we, when we had the situation with COVID, we saw people selling toilet paper for twenty dollars. Raising taxes sixteen percent is like selling toilet paper for twenty dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members and-
Good evening.
The public. My name is Terry Triggs Gales. I'm at eighty-five Clark and Drive. I have a couple of things I want to share. One of my, the one that bothers me the most that I talk about most often with this council is the traffic at Prospect and Eagle Rock. And when I heard that there was the possibility of putting in a Popeyes and a Sonic right there, I said, that must be one of those April Fool's jokes because no one in their right mind would entertain that. And why can't we have high-end restaurants? Why do we have to have a Sonic and Popeyes? Why do we go to other towns for a variety of restaurants? When we have McLoom's, Chit Chat, Pylon, and maybe one or two that I'm not mentioning. But we have Five Guys, we have Jersey Mikes, we have Chipotle. Now we're gonna go for Sonic. I mean, and Pop, come on, please. West Orange deserves more than that. We're about more than that. I actually have a pit in my stomach. I don't feel as joyful as Yvonne. I have a pain in my stomach because I'm worried about what's happening in my town. I've been here since eighty-four. That's a long time. I spent thirty-eight years working in Montclair and I can't help but compare Montclair and West Orange. We surpass Montclair in many areas, but we fall short in a lot of areas. And that's one. I had asked about a traffic study because it's crazy at Prospect and Eagle Rock. When you're going straight, and I'm directionally challenged, but if you're going up Eagle Rock and across toward Chit Chat and you're in that middle lane where you can go straight, the people in the right lane cut you off because they don't know that it's two lanes going forward. I saw an accident. We're gonna have many accidents. I talked about people cutting through CVS to beat the light. Somebody's gonna get hit by a car. And I want to know what's being done. I want to know that we're not passing the buck in continuing to tell me that it's a county issue. And I want to applaud Councilwoman Cabramichael. She called me and she said, "I hear you and it's a county issue and it's gonna be addressed." When? Will it be after it's too late? So that's one issue. The other one, the whole tax thing, again, it must be an April Fool's joke because who in their right mind could do that? I am a senior citizen, have been one for a few years now. I live alone. I can't afford to keep paying more and more and more and getting less and less. That just can't happen. I watched what happened in Montclair when they raised the taxes. They became far less diverse. People of color couldn't afford to live there. Is that what we're doing for West Orange? Are we trying to push folks out? Is that your intent? If it's not your intent, understand it's a strong possibility. Think about it. And why? Why is there this huge gap? Did all these pilots create this? Did we give breaks to corporations and then put it on the backs of citizens? Who decided that that was a good thing to do? I'm really concerned about my West Orange. And you all are elected officials. You have an administration that's new. I don't envy any of you. I don't envy the mayor. But these are serious issues and we want answers. And we don't want to have to dig too deep to get them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like, yes, for public comment? Thank you. Come forward, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ade Remy Abiyaye. I'm at eighty-one Linsley.
And you know, you're gonna have to spell that first. Thank you.
It was A-D-E-R-E-M-I, last name Abiyaye, A-B-I-Y-E.
And you said eighty-seven Linsley?
Eighty-one Linsley.
Eighty-one Linsley. Thank you so very much and I apologize.
I decided to speak today to share a different perspective from what I've heard so far. I am a newer resident to West Orange, having been raised in Detroit, Michigan. Lived in Harlem for six-plus years and recently moving to West Orange in the last three years. It is a community that I have completely fallen in love with. I think as you compare city services that are available to residents of this community and the care that our neighbors and fellow community members take with the city, it is something that has been warm and inviting for me to see. To, what initially brought me to this council meeting today is the hearing that taxes are going to raise sixteen percent, which was sort of alarming to me. Especially without knowing what sort of strategic investments or what the increased tax revenue would be used for. While I do think there is a need to continually look at what can improve our community, I think a number like sixteen percent, when the, you know, state average of municipality increases are two and a half percent, is a bit alarming to me. And I think there needs to be transparency about what that will be used for. The other thing, listening to our EMTs today, and I can share a story that sort of happened within the first year we lived here in West Orange. One day, we're just sitting at home and all of a sudden we hear a large crash on our street as our street is a main throwaway that people are using to get onto two eighty east. And it surprised me, after living in other cities, how quick the response was from our emergency services. I have never been in a place where you call on police and they're there within a minute and a half. I've never seen it. And it was something that sort of made me feel safer within the West Orange community. And to contemplate that those things could be impacted if we are shared services with other municipalities is concerning to say the least. But I did just want to come up here, talk about how I have enjoyed West Orange and have also been encouraging friends to come and look at West Orange as a place to live as those who are leaving the city. And sixteen percent is kind of tough for tax increase. So just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. And please accept Mr. A as you exit the room. I do not want to butcher your name. Remy, the last four letters of your first name. Got it. I'm gonna go with them. I'm gonna go with the friends. Mr. Remy. Thank you so much. Does that conclude our in-council chambers comments this evening? Mr. Fagan, if we have comments on our Zoom audience, please.
Yes, Council President, we have several. Fanny Chain Jarvis, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
And if you can tell us how many members we have in our Zoom audience?
Fifty-five total.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Fanny.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Fanny. I'm just gonna need you to speak up just a little bit because we can faintly hear you.
Okay, I'm at max volume now. Can you hear me?
No, you're very cold.
Okay, is this better?
Keep trying.
Okay, I am speaking very loudly. I am at max volume on my end.
And we can hear you now.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Fanny and I've been a West Orange resident for almost ten years on Warren Road. First, I'd like to wish all West Orange neighbors who have recently celebrated holy holidays a very blessed year. May you and your loved ones remain healthy and safe. Second, I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for leaning into West Orange's beautiful diversity by recognizing and celebrating or planning to celebrate events around Jewish Heritage Month, Haitian Heritage Month, Mental Health Awareness Month. I'd like to also point out for the record that May is also nationally recognized as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. While I'm pleased that the township has supported AAPI events, at this time, I'd like to encourage the township, especially given this evening's discussion around various issues, to actively initiate regular conversations and collaborations with diverse West Orange residents, including Asian Americans. Not as an afterthought, not just during Heritage Month and not just during your election campaign, but as part of your regular practices to engage and respond to voters and just simply as part of good governance. In summary, I'd like to encourage the township to expand your outreach and engagement to be more inclusive of West Orange's diverse community and to listen to, to work with and uplift residents, including our youth, seniors, immigrants, and folks who may be historically less visible or less vocal, but certainly no less deserving of your attention and support. I look forward to seeing the township make more progress in this area, which will undoubtedly increase civic engagement and public trust. Thank you.
Ms. Fanny, can you please give us your address?
I'm sorry, Council President, I had cut her off.
Can you give, can you let her back in, please, so we can get her? Just ask her to repeat her address, if you will, please.
Fanny, if you can please raise your hand and I'll let you back in to state your name and address for the record.
Okay.
She's here.
We had it correct on the record, Fanny on Warren Road.
And I didn't get her last name. Did you get her last? Jarvis. Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. We appreciate you. Okay, Mr. Fagan.
Jerome, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Janelle Jerome. I live at thirty-six Columbia Street in West Orange. I've been a member of this community for over twenty years. My concern is that as a member that lives downtown, we are neglected by this township. If you look at the back of Columbia Street, it does not look like it is a part of West Orange. It appears as if it is a part of Orange Township. We have a huge abandoned building at the end of our block, which we have been promised a redevelopment and nothing has been done. We have a huge parking problem. Nothing has been done. We have several issues that we face. We have Washington School. Nothing is being done for that school. The list of neglects for this part of the township keeps going. And I am sick of West Orange Township ignoring us as if we do not exist. We pay property taxes. Now you want to increase our property taxes to pay more for a township that does absolutely nothing for this end of the township. So why should we pay more taxes when we are forced to look at the worst part of this township? This is unfair to us in every way. And I would like all of you council members to come over here and see what we look at and what we have to deal with. And I want to see what solutions you guys have to give us. You have moved the library on top of the hill. Most of the people that live down here do not drive. There is no library for us. Everything is being moved and we are being forced to feel like we are now part of Orange and not part of West Orange. And that is unfair to us in every way. So when you all have time, please come by and take a look and see what we're looking with and what we're dealing with. Yes, it's nice to develop Main Street, but what happens to behind Main Street? What happens to what's on Washington Street? What happens to us? Nothing has happened for us in twenty-plus years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jerome.
Phil Litwinoff, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. My name is Phil Litwinoff. I live at eleven Linden Avenue. I'm not sure if I heard her name correctly, but one of the most recent people who'd spoke at the meeting, I think her name is Terry Triggs. I would like to commend her for her comments. I would like to echo some of the things she had said. West Orange, when I was growing up, and I've been in this town since nineteen seventy-seven, West Orange used to be a destination. People would drive from other towns to be in West Orange. Because of the way the development is going now with the drive-through restaurants, the latest one is being this Popeye and Zoom. I understand by the Staples or the Whole Foods Shopping Center, they're taking down the E T D. That will be a drive-through. You've got drive-through at Essex Green. I think maybe if this continues, we should change the name of the township from the Township of West Orange to Exit Fifteen W O. Because I think it's a disgrace that we have changed the character of this town to the point that we're no longer a destination, but now just a drive-through, a place to grab something while you're in your car. Don't even get out of your car. So I'd like to just, you know, thank Terry for her comments on it. The next thing I just wanted to bring out is, again, and it's going on, the same thing with property taxes. When I moved into this town, my property taxes were roughly thirty-five hundred dollars. Now my property taxes are sixteen thousand. It's almost a fourfold increase and you're going higher. Now, I don't have a problem in paying my share. However, thanks to the development that mostly happened under the previous mayor's reign, we've given sweetheart deals to developers. West Orange, you know, Essex Green is not paying property taxes. They're gonna be paying pilot. I understand that that high-rise development of, I don't know how many hundred rental units are gonna be on the downside behind the shop right. They also have a sweetheart deal not to pay their fair shop property tax. What deal is going to be done with the development that's being asked for behind- What deal is going to be done with the development that's being asked for behind Brighton Gardens and Pleasant Valley Way? In case you haven't realized, these are costs to the township that you're sticking on the existing taxpayers. Now, question for Mr. Gross, since you're the CFO, when will you have a draft of the budget ready to be distributed to the town? It should not be the day before it gets voted on. We should have a right to take a look at it and assess it. Because it seems like with the rental unit growth in this town, we're going to need more schools. We're going to need more money to spend for infrastructure. And because of the sweetheart deals, you're not getting it from the developers, and that's just simply not fair. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Mr. Litwinoff.
Uh, Mel Valdez, uh, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Mel Valdez, can you hear us?
Yeah, sorry.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, um, good evening. My name is Mel Julie Valdez and I live on Elm Street. Um, good evening, Town Council and residents. Um, I have a few questions regarding uh the agenda today. Um, the West Orange website states that the agenda was amended, was last amended May second, which is today at four fourteen P M. I would like to know, why is the agenda still being allowed to be amended at the very last minute on the same day that the Town Council is meeting? That makes no sense. Regarding the Resolution One Seven Two Dash Two Three, which is authorizing a change ordinance number, sorry, change order number sixteen to the West Orange Library at Ten Moonie Circle. Um, it is now costing us five million, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred forty-nine and ninety-six cents. It is now May second, and there has not been any announcement regarding the opening of said library. When can we expect the West Orange Library, Public Library to open? Also, when this um, when this was first proposed, moving the library from where it was to the new um location at Ten Moonie Circle, it was stated that jitneys would be used to transport, transport citizens to this new location. Will that still happen? And also, I would like to know, how many more change orders can we expect? Secondly, I would like to know more about um Resolution One Seven One Dash Two Three, which is authorizing a temporary budget appropriation. I would like to know if you can please explain why there is a, a need for an emergency budget appropriation. Also, why was the budget meeting scheduled for May fourth canceled? The attachment for the emergency budget appropriation is missing a lot of information. It's basically a list of different departments and how much money should be appropriated without any explanation. Um, I agree with what others have expressed today concerning the sharp rise in taxes. We are paying more in, in taxes. Um, there's been a stagnation in our wages going up. But as, as far as I can see, we're, we're getting less. Um, in my neighborhood, I live near Colgate Park. Colgate Park has not been updated. The street crosswalks in my neighborhood are worn or nonexistent. And the area just looks blighted. If ta- if taxes keep rising at the current rate, many people are going to be pushed out of this township, and we will lose the diversity that we so cherish. Additionally, parking, um, an issue with parking that I want to bring up. It is sad to hear that many residents in the working-class neighborhood of the valley are now being targeted and ticketed. Um, the last time they were ticketed, it was on a Saturday at two to three A M, two or three A M. I understand that parking is a big issue. My home on Elm Street does not have, um, does not have a driveway. My home didn't, didn't come with a driveway, and I had to advocate for years. And with the help of former Councilman Rakovia, there was a change to the ordinance on my street and several of the surrounding streets, so allow parking on both sides. And the signs now reflect no parking on Mondays from nine A M to one P M, and no parking on Fridays on the other side from nine A M to one P M to allow for street sweeping. I implore the, the township to really um consider making this a priority because many people are struggling to make ends meet and to live in these neighborhoods. And you're already paying high rent and to be um ticketed, it, it just makes it more frustrating. So it's something that we need to make a priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez.
Rachel Hershey, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting.
Hi, I'm Rachel Hershey. Do you hear me today?
Yes, please continue.
Yay, yay. Um, Rachel Hershey, Eight Mellon Avenue, West Orange. Um, I really just want to talk, reiterate um some things that people are saying. Um, so the first thing I just want to talk about is transparency and being rule-abiding. Um, I worked with Susan on getting us a new draft of the ordinance for cannabis. And I gave her something on April eleventh. It is now almost May fourth, and we still do not have it on an agenda. That's two meetings now. And it's something that most of the people at that table, the Town Council people, had agreed to. I watched the videos or if I was there, you had the votes to get it passed. It was the bare minimum of changes that everyone agreed to with the quote-unquote grandfathering and whatever you all agree to. It's still not on the agenda. And when I asked Susan why it wasn't on the agenda, she started telling me all of these weird rules. She told that, well, it can't be on the agenda until three people from the council state that they approve of it, which is nonsense. The reason it's on the agenda is that everyone can talk about it, not that they say they're in favor of it. So anyway, I went to the statute and I don't see that anywhere. Nowhere did it say there has to be some kind of preapproval to get something a town. And the rule also says that any Town Council person may introduce an ordinance. So there we have yet again, people, I think, making up rules or at least not giving the public a convenient way to understand what the rules are. Okay, so that's like a really big thing that I'm upset about. The other thing is, I'm going to talk about transportation because this is the first time I actually went to the city, New York City, for work by train. So I took the South Orange train to Penn Station. And that worked, but I kept reading about the free jitney. Well, there's no sign at the station where this West Orange Free Jitney is to get it one way or the other. Plus, I had difficulty knowing where to pick it up. It said, Kelly, I could get the jitney to the station at Kelly and Pleasant Avenue. But when I looked up on Ways Kelly Drive, they said that was on Mount Pleasant Avenue, not Pleasant Avenue. Plus, I would have had to wait an extra two hours for the jitney to come get me. And this is reiterating what another resident had said, we need public transportation. What are we supposed to do? I took the Ubers and they cost me like fifty dollars, believe it or not, thirty to go there because I had to go at five-thirty in the morning. And when I came back, I didn't want to wait two hours for the jitney, so I had to pay another twenty. That's unacceptable. Um, and then the third thing is, I want to talk about this budget shortfall, which I understand is why you're thinking of raising the taxes. I hope no decision has been made about doing that. I think I will form a protest or whatever the people have the power to do to reject any idea of actually imposing such a tax on people. That's ridiculous. My, I'm not going to pay those kind of property taxes, and I will move and probably try to move to, you know, Melbourne or Orange or South Orange. I mean, there are some beautiful neighborhoods around here, and they're not doing these crazy taxes. Um, I will just say, my understanding from having, you know, been at these meetings is this shortfall is essentially due to the fact that you paid three times as much as the market value. You had a bid, it was an outstanding bid for a property for four million, and West Orange comes in at eleven million. That's your shortfall, eleven million that you spent on property that is not worth eleven million. And this all goes to the very bad legal advice you, the Town Council has been getting. Because someone said, oh, well, you have to do the appraisal at the highest best use. That is not correct legally. If there's no intention.
Time is up.
Okay, those are my three main beats. And yes, you're all doing a great job, so please help us.
Thank you, Ms. Fagan. Thank you very much.
Mr. Fagan.
M K A, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is M K Adams. I'm on Park Drive South. I just want to um echo some of the wonderful comments made by um my neighbors and residents of West Orange that um sixteen percent plus property tax increase at this time would be devastating to just about everyone who lives in this town. It was only in twenty nineteen, I'm sorry, did you say something?
No, I'm sorry. Continue.
It was only in twenty nineteen that Mayor Parisi's administration raised the property taxes by eight-point-five percent. That was only four years ago. And as many of the residents have, have already brought up with the post-COVID inflation, the, the financial challenges that many of us are facing, a sixteen percent increase would be devastating. In the ten years that I've lived in town, my property taxes have already gone up thirteen percent. And then also just um to um kind of counter what the, one of the residents who spoke early in the meeting, she was in the, the council chamber. I expect and encourage the council to act like the independent body that it is. So I thank you for voting when you hold your ground or hold to the constituents that voted you into your office. You're not on uh an extension of the administration. You're not meant to rubber stamp everything that the administration presents. So it's not obstructionist. It's simply democracy, and I thank you when you have the courage to do that. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce Rudin, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting.
Hi, good evening. Joyce Rudin, Woodland Avenue. Uh, good evening, council members. I noticed on the agenda tonight that there are a lot of requested modifications that will increase fines in all sorts of categories, including fines on returning impounded shopping carts. I'm not sure how much revenue we ever got from impounding shopping carts, but, or why we're doing that, um, but whatever. Um, my point is that raising some, while raising some fees may be necessary, this is not going to make a significant dent in our budgetary problems. In fact, as an environmentalist, it's not seeing the forest for the trees. Here's the forest, as many of the other residents have said tonight, including Ms. Triggs and, and Mr. Litwinoff. West Orange's budgetary problems are largely due to the township's foolish real estate forays. Purchasing Rock Spring and prison bonded millions and millions of dollars we don't have, and now millions we need to repay with debt service. Our debt is due to this town's long history of making sweetheart deals with millionaire developers like the ones behind Essex Green that cost us a hundred million dollars over the next thirty years. That's the real stuff, not the fees for shopping carts. Uninformed real estate purchases and corporate welfare have bled the guts from our budget. Correcting these mistakes will go a long way in fixing our debt. Shopping cart fees, not so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rudin.
Sally Malangat, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. Sally Malanga, fifty-seven Ridge Road. The Our Green West Orange Native Plant Sale is on. You can order uh your native plants at ourgreenwestorange.org and bring some butterflies to West Orange. I like to mention that I object to the mosquito spraying and the last-minute notice without informing residents of what is being sprayed and what its impact is on people, animals, birds, and beneficial insects. We have natural mosquito control already. It's called native bats. We find ourselves with an opportunity to push our town in a more beneficial direction. I feel like this new chapter could be called the modern, sustainable West Orange. How we sunk into a fiscal, moral, and ecological mess and the courageous leaders who took action to right the ship. Ms. DiLorenzo's and Mr. Adams' public comment hitting the council against mayor, the mayor, makes me wonder if they had paid attention to our town government or any council meetings at all. There have been no checks and balances for the last two decades, and that has led us to the problems we face today. We expect to have these checks and balances now. First off, the council has expressed its sense that the former town attorney has provided inferior services and his contract has not been renewed, but he is still active. In order to speed this transition, it is suggested that no more matters be submitted to his law firm. Maybe he will get the hint. Please make clear that no more of the former town attorney's bills will be paid effective immediately. The administration must be required to issue a request for proposal for a new town attorney within seven days. We need a new town attorney with a demonstrated ability to make us a stronger town. Now we find ourselves in a budget quagmire. I suggest that the budget be returned to the administration until they come back with an acceptable two percent increase. This is not the time to rebuild the police, fire, or Department of Public Works. This is the time to hire a forensic accountant. This is the time to launch an investigation into why we paid three times the appraised value for the Rock Spring Golf Course. We never saw the appraisal. I hope you have indeed seen it now. Our former and current mayors from McKeon to Parisi to McCartney to the council members that served last year, Tammy Williams, Michelle Casalino, Susan McCartney, and Cindy Matute Brown made decisions that increased our bond issuances, neglected to apply to Green Acres for our money back, gave thirty-year tax breaks to developers, allowed our library to be sold without bidding, and fought residents over it all. We need to hold accountable those individuals who got us into this economic debacle, much of it due to overbuilding and real estate deals. Anyone who wants to see the council report cards for major votes can go to the Our Green West Orange website and look at their votes. Susan Scarpa, Asmaat Gebre Michael, and Bill Rutherford, you are not responsible for this economic debacle. To get a grip on this budget, we need a moratorium on residential or commercial projects that violate our current zoning laws. The ratables chase has failed. West Orange is a perfect example. The cost of servicing both the communities, residences, and businesses can be up to two dollars for every dollar we taxpayers pay in. Whereas open space preservation increases property values and the tax base. Residents should not have to rally to fight year after year what has become more and more extremely dense projects. Daughters of Israel, nine times the allowable density, the same with Redwood at a hundred and forty-two units, West Essex Highlands, four hundred units, Executive Drive, four hundred units, and on and on. Our tax base cannot support this growth. Our land cannot support this growth. It was correct to acquire open space. That will pay for itself. So council members, your constituents tell you, stand up to the bullying. Go for a new attorney. No budget approval unless it's no more than two percent. Moratorium on building, investigations into our books and the Rock Spring acquisition. This will help us rectify and slowly pull ourselves forward to become the fabulous, stress-free town we deserve to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malanga.
Uh, Council President, uh, fifty-seven members in the audience seeing no more hands raised.
Thank you. Public comment is now closed. Wow, so I have to personally agree um that this is exactly as I indicated at our last council meeting, uh, what public comment is about. And I want to thank each and every uh resident who took an opportunity to share your concerns, sentiments, and uh recommendations to this body. We absolutely.
and recommendations to this body. We absolutely do appreciate your engagement. Also, thank you. We have consistently had more than fifty people on each of our town council Zoom meetings since we have begun this year in January. So that too is evidence that we do need to continue in a hybrid format so that we can have the maximum amount of participation with our residents. And I heard comment that absolutely it is necessary for you all to share with us how you feel so that we can govern ourselves accordingly. So that I can and I'm starting the clock on myself because I do want to be mindful of how long I am speaking. Certainly, we give the public five minutes to comment at your pleasure. And I think that we have to govern ourselves accordingly as well. Unfortunately, we may not be able to respond to every single comment, but I am going to try to summarize some of the comments. So certainly, as a homeowner and a taxpaying resident of West Orange, I too am not completely satisfied, am appalled at a sixteen percent tax increase in the budget that has been presented to us. It is necessary and required that this administration go back, find what cuts can be made immediately. And it's not this body's responsibility to cut down or whittle down the budget. That is absolutely why we have professionals that this town employs. So I am going to be in adamant agreement that we do find some way to get this budget to a reasonable increase or amount, given where we are today. Also wanted to make note that the budget hearing was canceled on May fourth. I actually canceled that meeting. We did not receive the budget. We had requested at the last council meeting that we have fourteen days to review the budget. With us setting the date on May fourth, that was actually giving us thirteen days to review the budget. Unfortunately, we did not receive the budget until last week. And therefore, my council colleagues and myself did not have ample time to review. And I took an executive decision and canceled it. And tonight we will be looking under new business to see when we can come up with a new date. There is a little bit of information that I personally want to see before we come to a budget hearing. And that is an organizational chart, and that has been requested from this administration. So we're looking forward to getting all of the information so that we can make educated and responsible decisions. Parking, yes, parking is a problem. Several people indicated parking. I am going to state for the record that our friends and neighbors in Orange might be somewhat offended by saying that West Orange is looking like Orange. I'm not really sure what that is implying. As a real estate professional, I sell homes in Orange, West Orange, Montclair, Milburn, Essex County, Passaic County. And I I really don't look at Orange as less than. There are several beautiful communities in Orange. Houses are just as expensive in some neighborhoods in Orange as they are in West Orange. So I just want to be careful about what that messaging implies. Orange is just as much of a beautiful town as West Orange is. It is, of course, a much more urban landscape and a smaller square footage. But again, I do want to reiterate that there are some beautiful neighborhoods in Orange. And so I would not be comfortable disparaging our neighbors. We also talked about parking. And from this administration, we definitely are aware and understand that parking is an issue in several quarters in West Orange. We are hoping that the administration will review parking and come up with some innovative and strategic ways that we can accommodate our residents. I certainly have spoken to and support overnight parking in some areas without penalty. Whether it be by permit, that has to be secured. You know, that's up to them to decide what's going to be best. But certainly, I did and put on the record that even I and in my household have received parking tickets for parking on the street overnight. So my twenty-five-year-old son has to be reminded often that you have to get that car in the driveway because the thirty-five-dollar fee that you are paying right now will be increasing very soon. And that's money that I need to keep in my pocket because you eat a lot. Thank you to those who have come and said that they enjoy West Orange and that they are happy that they have moved here. We appreciate always hearing good things. As far as diversity in West Orange, absolutely, West Orange is a very diverse community. We have and try to embrace all cultural cultures in our community. And we are working with the AAPI community to recognize that holiday celebration this month. Indeed, Mental Health Awareness Month is the month of May. It is very special, significant, and passionate. I am personally about mental health and mental health awareness. So indeed, we will continue to advocate and make everyone aware that it is okay to not be okay. I also wanted to address some of the accusations of this council not having its independent thought processes, being a rubber stamp, or a yes to the administration. I don't think that any of us were elected to do that. I certainly have my own opinion about several things, and I am not a yes stamp to anything. Certainly, I respect my constituents, can check in with them often, and hope that I am a voice of the majority as opposed to anyone making the assumption that anything that anyone puts forward is going to be an automatic yes without thought and or consideration. Mr. Roach, you talked about the spirit of West Orange, and I indeed agree with you. There is a spirit of West Orange, but there needs to be a much more community-minded spirit in West Orange. We are all together connected, whether we would like to be or not. We are one West Orange. We have different opinions and certainly different concerns. But we do need to be mindful that when we are in this together and the success of each of us is dependent on every one of us. So thank you for those words. Ms. Roach, you too said the same thing about the purchase of Rock Spring. Certainly, it is my understanding, and I was not here for that vote. I was not elected as yet. But just to clear and and make the record based on what I come to understand is that when the assessment of Rock Spring was done by the county executive, it was done to keep that in as a golf course. We had developers that were knocking on the door to purchase Rock Spring for development. And it is zoned for residential development. And what this administration did was to have that property assessed for its highest and best use because that's what the developers were going to come in here and do. And we did not want to see a massive influx of residential construction on a hundred and thirty-six acres of a golf course. Their intent was not to keep it as a golf course, but again, to have it as residential housing. Ms. Bailey, you talked about law enforcement and new hires and not having health insurance upon retirement. I will certainly ask the administration to respond to that transparency and the budget. Yes, this administration can absolutely make sure it is being transparent. There are recommendations that we have often made to make sure that the public is informed. Some of those recommendations I have personally made. Put things on the municipal website so that the public is aware of what's going on. Now, certainly, that's only a recommendation that any of us can make. It is up to the administration and the mayor to make those decisions. But certainly, as far as notifications and notices, those things can be uploaded to the municipal website, a simple letter, a simple acknowledgement. But we do need to encourage residents to certainly peruse the municipal website for those updates if and when they do go on. Thank you for just giving me an opportunity to make sure I respond to the EMTs that were present here today. I apologize that the news outlets indicated that the 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 shared services agreement would be placed on the agenda. But again, I want to encourage all residents, all members of the public, that the agenda is posted on Friday before the meeting. And please take a look at that agenda and make sure you're coming here for the right things that are on the agenda. Ms. Valdez, you made mention that the agenda was updated even as soon as today before the meeting. It is noted on the agenda that it is subject to change. The agenda is subject to change. We are the governing body that has to do the legislative work of this municipality. So yes, there may be last-minute changes, but the last-minute change was a numeration error just to get the numbers right for the upcoming resolutions that were identified on the budget. This body has indicated that no substantial additions will be considered if they are not distributed to us by Friday. And I think each of us are holding firm to that commitment. And so if you do see a change in the agenda, it is something that is minor. It is not something that is significant. Again, each of us has has made a statement that if it is something substantial, and it is not emergent, that we're not going to consider it. And that's just the position that we've taken collectively. Mr. Scott, you said something about the Daughters of Israel and the zoning board. And yes, we do encourage all the members of the public to please attend the planning board meetings and the zoning board meetings. Those issues do not come before this body. They go directly to the land use commissions. As far as violating the law is concerned, I do want to acknowledge that yes, there are some ordinances on our books that are outdated that have not been adhered to. So we recognize that, and we are hoping that the administration will take into consideration and make updates as needed so that we can be in compliance and continue to govern in an orderly fashion. I want to thank Mrs. I'm going to say this wrong again as well, Fine Side, for coming in this evening. We spoke at length on Friday about several issues that she was so ably able to reiterate today. I just want to remind the public, however, that while we are advocating to get some increased bus services, and that is an ongoing, continued conversation with New Jersey Transit, that again, you know, that's all we can do is advocate for our residents. And we are, we do realize that the D Camp Bus Line put a complete void in opportunities for transportation into the city. So we are continuously working to see what improvements can be made. The shopping carts issue, I'm not really I I don't, I don't, well, I disagree that the increase in fees will generate income for this municipality. Our fees were seriously low in every capacity. And I don't know where they're going to stand. They have not been presented to this body. But certainly, I am going to ask that in the researching of the increased fees, that we do take a look at our neighboring communities, that we become more in sync with our neighboring communities. Because certainly, that is a source of revenue and income that we desperately, desperately need. I I can, I can agree, not only with our seniors who are on fixed incomes, but I have a kid in college and a kid at home. I can't afford a sixteen percent increase. I know that the Board of Ed is seriously considering and reconsidering their increase because even with the influx of additional funding, they still have proposed a, an additional increase as well. And I remind our residents that the municipal portion, the county portion, as well as the Board of Ed portion, all comprise our taxes. So please continue to advocate for any reductions and all reductions because it is absolutely necessary. I I'm not a part of the blame game. I am not going to assume or make the assessment that us giving pilots to wealthy developers is the cause of some of our shortfalls. I have asked the administration to provide me with information as to what pilots we have actually provided over the last ten years. So that list is forthcoming, and certainly I will be more than happy to share. I think it's a misconception to say that pilots are the reason why we have the shortfall. But again, without sufficient and adequate information and absolute knowledge, I will not make that assumption. But I am waiting for continued information. Also, for Ms. Jarvis, I just wanted to point out that we have a Human Relations Commission that is very, very much focused on inclusivity and making sure all of our community members are appreciated, that they do have a source of outreach. They are very active and engaged. I served as the chair of that commission for four years and really tried to make sure all of our communities, all of our residents were supported and felt welcome in this community of West Orange. Agree absolutely that we need to have a planner. I I am in agreement that development in our community does not seem to be coordinated. We have advocated for a town planner, Economic Development Director. And as you heard during our liaison announcements, the Economic Development Commission has reviewed and edited and re-reviewed an RFP so that the administration can fill that position. We certainly do need to have coordinated expansions in this community as opposed to one project over here and one project over there. I am not for or against the Sonic and the Popeyes Chicken. I am supportive of continued development, but certainly with a town planner, it would give, or at least we would hope, that it would give a little bit more opportunity for for the entire town and a township approach to be made so that we don't just overly saturate one area of our community. I think, and I apologize if there's anyone that I did not respond to. I certainly did not respond to each individual by name and tried to summarize my comments. Again, we want to be mindful of your time. I also received several, several communications from residents this week asking that we be mindful to not repeat the same things as we continue to go around the room as elected officials, to be mindful that we have a varied age group of people and persons that are listening to these meetings. And we need to be respectful of everyone's time. It is very unsustainable for us to have five- and six-hour town council meetings. And the public, certainly, even if they are not employed, certainly do not want to listen to five- and six-hour council meetings. So duly noted, and hopefully we can expedite our meetings. It seems that we do have somewhat of a short agenda this evening. So if my council colleagues, and I'm certain that they do have comments or something that they may want to add that is different from what I have already indicated, I would encourage you to do so. Thank you so much for just giving me an opportunity to respond. If there's anyone that I did not respond to directly, please feel free to email me directly or even to give me a phone call. I do agree that I will be meeting with those in the Washington area. I did speak to a resident and did commit to doing another community meeting in that area so that, yes, this body and the administration can hear your concerns. And yes, I do agree also that as members of this council, that is something we should do. Yes, the mayor does have office hours, but for us, it's council meetings. We do need to be held accountable, and we do need We do need to be held accountable and we do need to make sure we are responding to the residents' concerns. So thank you, and I will come forward with a date. If we can plan something in May, certainly I will try and get that on the calendar and the information will be posted. Thank you.
Council President, if I may, I just want to note for the record that after you closed public comment, several hands were raised in the Zoom audience. And I just want the Zoom audience to be reassured that everyone who was in the queue was called upon. And the only ones that weren't called upon were the ones that raised their hand after you had closed public comment.
Thank you so much. And I will remind our Zoom audience, as I did last week, to please, 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 if you want to make public comment and you are in the Zoom audience, that there is a queue that will automatically put you in line for a public comment. You do not have to wait until the person has finished speaking to, to raise your hand. Please raise your hand if you are in the Zoom audience as soon as public comment is opened for the Zoom audience. You don't even have to wait until that. As soon as I open public comment, you can certainly raise your hand in the Zoom audience so that we are aware that you want to make comments. And I apologize that we aren't not able to reopen public comment. If you do have concerns, please feel free to email all of us. That email will come to every last one of us and that email is council, C O U N C I L at westorange.org. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gabor Michael, you had your hand raised?
Yes, because I received an email, but I guess he addressed it, that someone had their hand up before public comment closed.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scarpa.
They claimed it was before.
I understand, okay. But he said it wasn't.
What time did public comment close? Do you have a time?
No.
It's very difficult to figure out how to use that.
Because they sent proof in a screen shot.
I, I understand, but I'm not going to open public comment again. Thank you, Councilwoman Scarpa. Mr. Fagan?
Uh, yeah, it, it, all I can say is that every hand that was raised here called upon.
No, instructions, are there instructions on the Zoom so that people know how to?
No, it's very confusing.
Uh, that I can't answer, I don't know.
Okay, so to, to that question that Mr. Kozler has asked, I have been in the Zoom audience before and I have not seen any instructions. Those instructions are verbal instructions. It's in a webinar mode setting. So that might be something we consider to do so that we can, because you can actually put a notice on Zoom. We may need to figure out how to do that, but I know you can advise the public on what to do. So we will, we will make sure.
Counsel President will look into that.
Yes, we will make sure that we look into that because we don't want to exclude any of our residents for comment. Thank you, Councilwoman Scarpa.
To your point, Council President, several people had their hand raised in the queue from the very beginning. And they, they wait in line and as you mentioned, that they don't need to wait till the person before them is finished speaking. And unless they're in the queue, they can, unless I see them on the list here, they are not in the queue regardless of what their computer says at home.
Thank you. And again, our apologies, but please feel free to email us and we will respond to your comments. Also note for the public, just in case you are wondering, certainly each of us can respond to, to any of the inquiries, especially when you respond to us at council. However, normally when I respond, I do not always respond all so that my council colleagues can see what I have responded to or if I have responded. Sometimes I do, but we also have to be mindful as a body that we are governed by Open Public Meetings Act regulations. And that, and that means that we cannot start dialogue back and forth between more than two of us because that is a violation of the sunshine laws and then we can be fined for that. And so we don't want to get the municipality in any trouble. We don't want to get ourselves in any trouble. Oftentimes it's just very difficult. But again, each of our information is on the municipal website. You can email us collectively, council@westorange.org. And if you want to email any of us independently, it is usually our first initial, last name, at westorange.org. But if you have any questions, certainly I sometimes don't even say my colleague's name correctly and I've known her for years, Gabor Michael Asmaret. Might be difficult for you to spell, so go on to the municipal website, put in council and it will also populate for you. And you can click on each of us independently to, to email us separately if that's your pleasure. Thank you, and Councilwoman Scarpa, I apologize.
Okay, so I just have to say I agree with Ms. Morelli. We, I am so encouraged and joyful about what I've seen here tonight with democracy in action, with the number of people who have come here who care about our community. You know, I came here for a decade, for years before I actually sat in this seat. And it's so important that all of us get out and make our voices heard. So thank you to everyone. To Nicholas and Mrs. DiBarnardo, thank you so much for coming. I want to assure you that you are heard. I want to talk to everyone who is concerned about that Shared Services Agreement that I have carefully researched the agreement for dispatch with many, many stakeholders in various communities. And I really feel it's a matter of public safety. And I am not, I am typically for shared services. I think in most cases, they're really, really wonderful economies of scale. But in this instance, it's a matter, I believe it's a matter of public safety. Many of you have heard me say, the fire department here in West Orange saved my father's life and I had him for about four more years than I probably other would have when he had a heart attack. And it was the incredibly quick response from that department that saved his life. They were there within minutes and the professionalism. So I feel strongly that it's a matter of public safety and I'm not for shared services of dispatch. Although other, most other things probably are worth looking at. Mrs. Fine Sold, we had a nice conversation this afternoon. I'm so glad you came here this evening. The de-camp bus situation is so unfortunate. We have to make sure that we have a myriad of transportation opportunities, not only for our seniors, who she is and needs that service, not just to get to the grocery store, but first to socialize and to meet her friends in Newark. I think we have a, a real transportation issue to tackle in so many areas of our city. And on the Older Americans Advisory Board, I will be doing that with Mrs. Morelli, Mrs. Lefkowitz, and a number of other, other members of our community. In terms of the buses to New York, I am, have reached out to some of our legislators and I'm hoping to have a conversation with them to see what else can be done. Mr. Calfani, I want to assure you that I am always introspective and soul searching when it comes to all of the decisions I make. I hear your concern about the taxes, the budget, and the idea of forensic auditing. I've heard that bounced around before. I mean, we need transparency in all aspects of our government and accounting and we all have to hold everyone's feet to the fire. So hopefully the budget will be put up on the website and our residents will be able to take a closer look at it. We have had it and we're all working diligently to see what we can do. Doug Adams, I want you to know that we are all working as hard as we can to ensure that Mayor McCartney is successful. We are all very invested in her success, especially as the first woman mayor. I, I want to see her successful. And when I got the calls about the Popeyes and, and the Sonic on Eagle Rock Avenue, this Sunday I called her, I reached out to Mayor McCartney just to get her feelings about it before I responded to the public. I wanted to know how she felt. I do that all the time with other council colleagues and I reach out to residents night and day. I tell you, I answer phone calls you would not believe, or every day, I don't, I can't tell you how many weekends. So I think there's a real opportunity and desire for us all to work together. But what we need to understand, some of us have very different ideas or solutions about how to resolve some of the problems. And we need to be respectful and look strategically and look at all of the options and take into account all of our constituents who have put us here. Ms. Lefkowitz, you are so right. West Orange is looking and feeling more like a city these days, losing its majestic mountain terrain of treetops and hills and being replaced by high-rise development. I ran for this seat because for a decade, I watched these so-called areas in need of redevelopment turned into commercial development that has deprived our residents of the scenic beauty and increased their taxes by giving wealthy developers 30-year tax abatements. As these developers develop these properties, they make a lot of money for themselves but do not always meet the needs of the majority of our residents. This is why we need an independent town planner that will cultivate and look at developing our township the way we want it developed. At a recent meeting with residents, I expressed this concern, delineating the difference between a consultant, who we have providing planning function, and he does what he's told to do and he does implement what he's asked to implement. But there's a difference between that and an independent planner who would take a strategic approach, would not be worried about being rehired for the next project. I've been a business consultant. I understand the role of consultants. We need a planner. Recently, I've gotten calls from all kinds of people about the Popeyes and the Sonic and they all, they all are concerned about many, many areas. We need to all go and watch the zoning board and look at these issues of traffic, lighting, noise, so we can understand and influence what is proposed. Many residents would like a good burger or steak restaurant rather than fast food. We, they wouldn't, a good planner would know how to cultivate these businesses and would do the marketing research. Residents have an opportunity to voice their concerns at the zoning board on May 18th. And they need to do that. A strategic planner would also save us money by ensuring efficient project management and procurement. RFPs would be written to safeguard efficient construction and be financially responsible. The library renovation project is a good example of this. There's construction overruns and add-ons. Ms. Valdez, I ask your same question. How many more add-ons are we going to have for our library? It's costing taxpayers unnecessary expense. So this is why we need a planner. We all understand that commercial opportunities to develop rock spring golf course without destroying the course or putting residential housing there need to be looked at in detail. And that again, is what an independent planner would do. We need more varied options for our downtown development. We need to update our master plan, our zoning laws, our steep slope ordinance, and our, yes, our tree ordinance. Our tree ordinance should not have a fund for developers to pay into for cutting down trees without the responsibility of replacing them. It's destructive to our environment and all of these need to be looked at more carefully. And that is what an independent town planner would do. So we need to protect our residents and our township from the destruction of becoming a city. Government has the tools. We are not using them effectively. And thank you for holding our feet to the fire and that for everyone who came out on all of those issues. Mr. Roche, I will always do what I feel is the right thing. I've said that many times up here, thank you for reiterating that. I took this seat, I earned it without taking a cent from anyone, not a real estate developer, not a business person, and not even a resident because I want to be able to come up here and be independent and I have the courage to do what I think is the right thing for the residents of this town, no matter what. I'm not a politician, I guess I am now, but I don't really want to be. And I have no interest in doing anything. I'm not worried about another election. I have no interest in doing anything but what's right for our community. So thank you for bringing that out. Brent Scott, again, thank you for bringing out all of the issues that you brought up. You know I'm not a rubber stamper. And I, you know that transparency is key. And thank you for bringing up the need to hold all of our council people and our administration to doing what is right and what the town council votes on. As I've said before, we cannot just bring up a piece of legislation again or an ordinance again because the administration did not like the outcome. When a council member's vote for a piece of legislation or for an ordinance, it needs to be respected and thank you very much for bringing that out in the open. Cynthia Bailey, I agree with you about law enforcement. As I said, we're nothing without our fire and our police. And I've been uncomfortable with the way they've been treated in the last administration. I think Mayor McCartney is going to do a better job and thank you. Sophia Calfani, the taxes, of course, everyone is concerned about that. And I would like to know why they're not on our website for all of you to view. They really should be. We just got them last week, but I hope all of our residents will have the opportunity to pour through our budget. And it should, uh, what was posted today? Oh, great, okay, good. All right, so it's all there, everybody go get it and tear it apart. We all need as much advice as we can get. Terry Triggs, of course, the traffic on Eagle Rock. And Prospect has been a problem. I totally agree with you, a traffic study needs to be done and I imagine it will be done if they are proposing the fast food restaurants there. Obviously, everybody knows how I feel about the pilots and the redevelopment. Thank you to Ms. Rennie, our new resident, for coming out. I'm so glad that he is so engaged in our community and hopefully he'll take a look at the taxes too. Fanny, again, the beauty of our town is our diversity. Thank you, all you do with the Asian American and Pacific Islanders. Thank you for the African Heritage Association, for all you do. We are only as good as the team that we play on. My father was an outstanding football player. He's in the Newark Academy Hall of Fame and he taught me that from when I was a little girl. And I think it's what made me successful as a businesswoman. I think it's what's going to make me successful as a councilwoman. And so again, I am nothing without all of you. Thank you for coming out here. We are all only as good as the team that we play on. Phil Lettenoff, thank you again. I agree, as you heard, the, the character of our town is changing. As someone who works in our schools, I am very concerned about the development and the effect it has on our schools. And to Mel Valdez too, as a speech pathologist at Washington School, I am incredibly concerned about the way Washington School is treated in our community and that, that whole area of town unfortunately does not always get the recognition and the resources that they need. You know, there is a lot of overcrowding right now with the preschool there. We, and I, I agree that we need to look at the way we approach our most economically challenged students and areas of town. Rachel Hershey, thank you for bringing up the ordinance again. It's, I'm not going to run through the litany of when it was provided to the council. I have it here, but in the interest of saving time, I think you did a really nice job. But I do want to say that I wasn't comfortable with the stonewalling that's gone on. I'm just going to leave it at that. Right now, we have, I've incorporated council. Right now, we ha, I've incorporated Councilman, Councilman Rutherford's changes. You have helped me do that, and we've got that right now routed around to all of our council members. Councilman Rutherford, Councilwoman Casselino, and myself are in agreement with all of these changes. We have three votes, and I expect it to be on the agenda for our next council meeting. They're all things that we've all agreed on. So hopefully, we'll be able to move forward. See, I think I've got most of you. Joyce Rudin, again. Thank you. I agree. Sometimes we don't see the forest from the trees, and you know how I feel about all the real estate deals. Uh, Sally Malanga, once again, I agree with everything that you said. You're right on the money, on everything. And um, you know, we, the, the development, it does cost, we've said it before up here, costs a couple dollars, two dollars for every tax dollar we spend on the development in terms of the communities, the cost of community services, our infrastructure, and the effect on our schools. And I can tell you, our schools are overcrowded. So I am for halting all the residential development. So I think everybody got a gist of how I feel about most of these issues. And I think I'll move it on to. Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you um, to all of the residents that raised their voice tonight. I think it is important uh, for us to, to witness democracy in action while we will not always agree on every issue. I do think it's important that we share our thoughts and that we create safe spaces to disagree um, and have robust conversation. And at the end of that process, uh, the democratic process prevails. Um, in this particular case, there are five council members. When we take a vote, most of the time, if three of us agree, uh, that will, that will prevail. Um, and so I, I think your uh, advocacy in moments like this is how you hold us accountable, how you let us know how you feel. I mean, there are other avenues as well, but this is uh, in public. And that's what government is meant to be. We are not meant to be in a back room uh, making deals amongst ourselves. We are meant to be out in public doing the people's business. Uh, and the people deserve a right to speak on that. So thank you for all of you that have raised your voices. Mr. Fagan, as always, thank you for your timely and informative announcements. Uh, we certainly do appreciate it. I am looking forward to uh, both the Haitian flag raising on May fifteenth uh, and the Memorial Day service on uh, May twenty-ninth. Um, to um, Ms. De Bernardo and Mr. Jamie, um, I certainly understand your position and echo your sentiments. I think your questions were rightly placed. Uh, if that um, if that uh, uh, resolution is presented to us again, I expect that all of those, those questions will be answered in public. Uh, but I also don't expect it to be presented again. You know, two things there. First, the news outlets may have gotten it wrong, but they got that information from somewhere. I, I don't know where. They didn't get it from me, but they got that information from somewhere. And I know that our mayor put a post on Facebook uh, sta, stating that it would be added back to this agenda. I, I don't think that's the right way to govern. When the council expresses its will, that will has to be abided by and honored and respected. We have been duly elected by the people of this town to represent their voice, and when we do that with our vote, that has to be honored. Ms. Feinsad, you know, I echo, echo your sentiments with regard to uh, the D Camp bus line. Um, it is, is certainly an issue that is um, uh, affecting many people across the town, uh, and not just our town, but other towns. Uh, so we certainly do take your suggestions to heart. I'm happy to work with my council colleagues and our county commissioners to figure out what we can do uh, to advocate more um, vigorously to have better bus line transportation to New York. Um, she also mentioned the Popeye and the Sonic, and I'm not going to say it every time that people have brought it up, or at least I don't believe I will. Um, uh, you know, if we had an economic development officer who was responsible for this townwide, uh, we probably have a better mix of businesses. Um, and I, I have a secondary comment to make on that, but it's buried deep in my notes from another commenter, so I'm going to leave it at that for now. Uh, Ms. Di Lorenzo. Um, I just want to clarify a couple of things. First, when I voted against um, the grant, um, I explained my reason at that time, and I will, I will reiterate my reason for voting against it. Um, first and foremost, we're already dealing with a very antagonistic um, position toward our police and firefighters. Um, I don't want to make that matter worse by uh, causing some chaos or some uncertainty with our dispatchers wondering if they're going to keep their jobs, which is exactly what they echoed up here tonight when they spoke. Um, we're not walking away from a four hundred thousand dollar grant. That grant, as Councilwoman Scarpa stated uh, at our last council meeting, uh, would not affect our budget at all. Um, that, that grant, while it would allow us the opportunity to do the study, um, I think our public safety um, matters more than any dollars that we could save. And I, I am certainly not interested in moving dispatch to another town uh, where even seconds that could be added to response times uh, could end up causing harm to those that need it the most. So uh, I am not willing to sacrifice public safety in this regard. I don't think we need to. I think a better process can be employed in making sure that people are informed of potential decisions like that. And I think um, I think the mayor has heard that message loud and clear, which is probably why it's not on the agenda tonight. I, I, I don't look at my role as making the mayor's job more difficult. Um, in fact, uh, to both Ms. uh, Delorenzo and to uh, Pastor Adams, I encourage you to reach out to the mayor and ask her about our conversations in private. I have done as much as I can do to be supportive of this mayor. In fact, the votes that I've taken, I've taken because I recognize um, that um, there may be some uh, advice and counsel that the mayor is getting that uh, does not reflect the will of the people. And she needs to know that she has support when it comes to representing the will of the people of West Orange, the fifty thousand residents that are most directly affected by the decisions we make in this room. And I do have a problem with the way town has been run for over twenty years. Uh, I will go down a, a list. Uh, we just started talking about Rock Spring. You know, someone mentioned, and it's later in my notes as well, uh, that in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, we purchased Rock Spring. Um, that was coming off of a almost nine percent property tax increase. While it would be nice to own a golf course and generate revenue um, from that property, when we're asking residents to pay almost nine percent more in property taxes, to me, that is not a decision we can make. We just have to make the tough call and say no and not bond out eleven or twelve million dollars when we've just raised property taxes by eight or nine percent. So I love Rock Spring. I think it's a gem. I think we can polish that thing off and make a good uh, return uh, on our investment. However, leadership requires making difficult decisions. And I think it's tough to make that kind of a call when you have an eight or nine percent tax increase, especially when in the process in, in, of selling it to us. Um, as some other commenters uh, noted, uh, the, the appraised value was four million dollars. The county offered six million dollars, and we paid almost double what the county offered. Now, I understand uh, Council President's position with regard to highest and best use. Um, and I, I don't agree with it in this particular case because while others, developers may have wanted that property, uh, to my knowledge, none of them bid. I'm happy to hear whatever those bids were. Uh, but to my knowledge, none of them bid on the property. And at the end of the day, if we're going to spend eleven or twelve million dollars, we, we, we have to do it in a way that makes sense, that doesn't force us to dig the hole deeper with regard to our property tax situation, uh, which, by the way, is residential development. Regardless of which metric you use, residential property taxpayers use more in services than they pay in taxes. So on average, every single unit, regardless of what size the unit is, from studio on up, every unit on average uses more in taxes, in services than they pay in taxes. So we've got to have a better balance of residential and commercial ratables. Uh, and, and Rock Spring was an example of that. Executive Drive is another example of that. Edison Loss is an example of that. Moving the library is an example of that. Having a town planner budgeted in the, in the budget for three years in a row and not hiring one is another example of that. So these are things that I don't agree with over the last twenty years, and I think they've led us to this place right now. Um, and we're not trying to defeat everything the mayor does. Again, I want to reiterate, we have to um, we, we have to work together. Uh, it is not always easy. We don't always agree, but we have to find a way to work together because at the end of the day, all of us live here. And all of us want to benefit from uh, the beauty of West Orange. And if we're bickering and we're fighting, especially in public, uh, I think that erodes confidence in this body and in the administration as well. Uh, Mr. Calafani, I, I thank you for your continued advocacy uh, and your uh, uh, insight on uh, the need for greater transparency with regard to the budget uh, and the tax issues. Uh, and I will say in response, while I, I, I have supported, I believe every single shared service opportunity we've had, with the exception of the dispatch services, and I, I've already stated why I am um, opposed to that one. Uh, and uh, Mr. Dr. Calafani uh, encouraged us to have a forensic audit. I, I think that's a great idea. Um, I don't know how we, we can get one. I think we should. Uh, because I've been asked multiple times since uh, the last council meeting, where is the money going? And while I can say with some general uh, knowledge, I do not know for certain. I think it's important uh, that, and I think we owe that to our residents, that they know exactly where their money is going. Uh, Pastor Adams, I echo your sentiments that we need to come together as a community. And I would encourage everybody to um, quit taking a political angle to all of these disagreements uh, and trying to um, create wedges between different parts of the community. Um, again, at the end of the day, we're all going to pay a price for that. Uh, Ms. Morelli, as always, thank you for your continued uh, presence and advocacy on all of these issues, including uh, a whole list of them that you ran down today. So thank you so much. Uh, Mr. And Mrs. Roach. You know, that, one of the quotes of, of the night for me uh, was we do need to see and hear each other uh, as well as be heard. So yes, we do need to be heard, but we need to see and hear each other. And, and when I hear you say that, I think it, it means, uh, what, what it meant to me was um, understand who people are at their core and how they are, and look for the best in people. I, I do believe we owe each other some grace. Uh, and not to assume that because we disagree, somehow we're monsters or conniving uh, or, or political. Um, it is entirely possible for rational, reasonable people to disagree on an issue, and that happens frequently in here. I've addressed the dispatch is, issue. Um, I'm going to come back to the town attorney issue. Uh, Mr. Scott, I want to thank you for your continued presence and, and advocacy. Um, uh, and thank you for announcing the uh, next zoning board meeting. Um, and I do agree with you, Mr. Scott, that the uh, meeting should be held both in person and virtually. We have to get back to some level of normalcy. Uh, and that, to me, is a part of it. Ms. Bailey, Cynthia Hadley Bailey, uh, I do uh, take into uh, serious consideration your position. I do uh, understand um, the implications of not being able to offer new hires, uh, uh, health benefits when they retire uh, and the competition that we are in with other towns that do so. Uh, so at our next opportunity uh, to negotiate contracts, we will certainly keep that into consideration and do the very best we can to support those that risk their lives for us. Um, Ms. Calafani, I think your passionate uh, commentary regarding property taxes uh, does not need any commentary from me. I think you spoke very eloquently. Uh, Ms. Trick Scales, thank you again for raising uh, the traffic concerns at Prospect Avenue in Eagle Rock. That is, if not the worst uh, intersection for accidents in town. It is one of the worst. Um, we had an accident today, uh, just this evening on um, on uh, Northfield and Gregory. So we know how some of these tricky turns with poor signage and poor lighting can affect uh, movement through town. Um, I, I, I know our Department of Public Works and our, our township engineer are certainly overworked and overburdened, um, but we will certainly add that to the list of things to follow up on. Um, and you know, the Popeyes and the Sonic, in addition to the traffic issues there, you know, what I feel and what was sent, what was uh, said tonight in public comment, um, basically is that we are cheapening West Orange. You know, I, I like, I don't really eat fast food, but I like to go because my kids like to go. Um, and I, I understand the convenience and all that. Um, but it is very difficult to understand how other towns with similar property tax structures, similar demographics for residents have far more options for entertainment in town than we do. And again, it gets back to having an economic development officer that can organize these things townwide, make sure that we're taking a, a townwide approach to development, and we get the mix of businesses that residents want, need, and are willing to support. Um, you know, the Popeyes and the Sonic, they're going to do great with the late night crowd and with the high schoolers at lunch. Um, you know, but that's not really what we need, especially when we hear from so many different corners of town that it would be nice to have a restaurant row of some sort or just more options for entertainment in town. Uh, and again, for the pushing of the traffic study, we will certainly follow up with that, uh, Ms. Trick Scales. Um, I think everyone that has uh, voiced their opinion about the property tax increase, I want you to know that I uh, hear you loud and clear. I will not vote for a sixteen percent property tax increase. That's not going to happen from me. Um, I do expect that um, whether it's the Council President's uh, recommendation that the administration uh, take the budget back and do their own work, or whether we do the work ourselves, either way, um, I do expect that we will be able to find uh, both cost savings and new sources of revenue. We can't just look at the, at the expense side when trying to balance this budget. Uh, and there may be some less than ideal uh, situation that we have to take advantage of in order to provide property tax relief and lower some of the burden on residential taxpayers. But these are the tough choices that you elected us to make. And, and I think by having a public process and allowing everybody to express themselves, even when we disagree, you will understand how we came to that conclusion and why we made uh, the recommendations that we did and took the votes that we did. So I, I look forward to the process, whether it's council president's process or any other. Uh, and I do expect that at the end of the day, will be a public process, and residents will have their voice heard. All right, I'm on my last page of notes. I, I try to answer everybody. Uh, I think if you wait, uh, take the time to come and address us, we should take the time to come back and address you. Um, um, Ms. Fanny Chan Jarvis, I do uh, support uh, all of your statements regarding diversity and celebrations within town. Um, and I'm grateful that you continue to show leadership with the AAPI community. Uh, so thank you for your comments tonight. Um, uh, Janelle Jerome, thank you for both your, your commentary and your email. Uh, we are already addressing that part of town. Uh, so stay tuned, more to come. Mr. Litwinoff, uh, you know, you, I, I echo your sentiments. I think the pilot at Executive Drive, I've said it a million times. If you can't develop housing below Essex Green in these rolling hills with this school system, this close to New York City, if you can't do that profitably, then you should look somewhere else to do business. Uh, this is, we, I, I really feel like too often, we sell ourselves short. I, I think that property is valuable. I understand the whole history of the tax ratables and the tax assessment and all of that. Uh, I just think that uh, we could do better for residents. Um, and it does contribute to the issues that we face. Um, you can't get another kid in, in St. Cloud in Washington. Mount Pleasant is crowded. My daughter goes there. I see it every day. I've been sending kids to Mount Pleasant School now for, for fifteen years. And uh, I can assure you, when we first started going there with my oldest daughter, who is now a junior in college, when she was uh, in elementary school. when she was in elementary school, when we first started going there, it was much easier to drop off your children in the morning. There are now people parked on both sides of the street. You can barely get through, and God forbid, if there's snow or leaves out, you can't get through without allowing traffic to come through first. So we have to do something to address that infrastructure. And to your point, Mr. Litvinoff, giving away pilots is not going to help us. Ms. Valdez, thank you for asking about the jitneys that were promised with regard to the library. I certainly share your concern that they may not materialize, but I do hope the administration has an answer about when they are planning to provide that service. And to your question about why is it costing so much? I don't know the answer to that. I'm sure at some point tonight, I want to get through all my comments first, if you don't mind, Mr. Gross or Mr. Smiraldo. I'm sure at some point tonight, they will address that. Ms. Hershey, yes, I support Councilwoman Scarpa in her call to have the cannabis ordinance placed on the agenda for our next meeting. I think we've done all the hashing out of that ordinance that we need to do right now. Thank you, Ms. M.K. Adams, for your comment about expecting and encouraging the town council to act like the independent body we are. We are certainly taking that seriously and doing the very best we can. Ms. Rudin, I do support your question regarding the shopping cart issue. That seems to me to be targeted toward people who have literally no resources. I understand we need to raise fees, and certainly that can be helpful, and we've been, had our conversations about that. I'm certainly supportive of raising fees. But shopping carts are generally used by homeless people, and that's just a trap for for them to end up owing money that they cannot pay. They're already homeless. I don't want to kick someone when they're down. Thank you, Ms. Malanga, for your, Mrs. Malanga, for your announcement about the native plant sale. I am no fan of mosquitoes, so I am grateful that we're spraying for them, although I don't know what's in there. And I I I do, I am concerned, but at the end of the day, I am pretty much more concerned about the mosquitoes and the spray. Maybe I shouldn't be, but but I am. But to your point about Mr. Trank being attorney, I'm going to come back to that in a second. All right, so I have prepared comments. This is the first time in the two plus years that I've been on council that I've brought some prepared comments. Want to kind of talk about how we've gotten to where we are with regard to this town council and administration. Several weeks ago, town council was presented with an ordinance governing how the zoning board chair would be selected and how many consecutive terms the zoning board chair could serve. The existing ordinance allowed for no more than two consecutive terms. We were told that we needed to change that because the zoning board chair had already served many more than two consecutive terms. And the council listened to the administration's position and decided to vote against it. While we were not unanimous in that vote, that vote passed properly, and we did not change the existing ordinance that had been on the books for quite some time. What began with that vote has now snowballed into an administration that is openly and blatantly ignoring the will of the town council. Legal team asked us to change the ordinance because it wasn't being complied with. We voted no, we kept the term limits, and then we were ignored. Current zoning board chair is still serving as zoning board chair. And they felt that having the attorney assigned to the zoning board state that the existing ordinance that we maintained was not legal, that that would override the will of the town council. It does not. As I said in our last meeting, I expect the zoning board at their very next meeting, which Mr. Scott eloquently announced tonight is on May 11, will have a new election for a new chair. And because the current chair has served more than two consecutive terms in that role, that chair cannot and should not be considered. So we started there, but then we moved to our town attorney's contract. We were presented with a resolution to renew his contract and extend it for three years or four years. That vote was illegally conducted with the mayor casting the tie-breaking vote. We received legal advice that the mayor could vote and break the tie. Our council president invited the mayor to cast that vote, and she did. And then we had to subsequently come back and undo it because it was not proper. This council has been clear on the reasons why we will not renew our town attorney's contract. Yet here we are with the same town attorney and no RFQ for a new one, and the will of the town council is still being ignored. Moved from that issue to the notification by a resident that our CFO and BA, Mr. Gross, was not allowed legally to serve in both roles. After initially being given guidance that it was not only legal, but fiscally prudent to allow our CFO to also serve as BA, we're confronted with the truth of the matter that he is not. And the solution presented by the administration was not acceptable to the majority of the town council. Yet here we are, being asked to conduct business as usual in spite of the law and in spite of the fact that the council has been notified of the inherent conflict of interest and expressing their will to separate those roles. Again, the expressed will of this town council is being ignored. And then finally, in response to that CFO-BA situation, special counsel was given an executive session in an effort to sell us on a solution to the problem, the inherent conflict of interest and the noncompliance with the law. That attorney was picked by the same town attorney the majority of the town council has voted against. No consent or approval to hire that attorney was given by this governing body. Yet he was brought in anyway with no contract, no vote by us, essentially trying to sell us on an idea that we were not willing to buy. So as a result of all these things and more, council colleagues, Deborah Michael and Scarpa and I are prepared to assert our authority as council members duly elected in the township of West Orange. If the expressed will of the town council is not honored by our next town council meeting, we will introduce a resolution of no support for our township attorney that requires no payments be made to him or to his firm, that no legal work be assigned to him or his firm, and that he not be allowed to assign legal work to any firm. We will further introduce a resolution specifically requiring that no further payments be made to our town attorney or any other attorney in connection with the litigation involving our police officers and firefighters. Two differently constituted town councils have unanimously agreed to stop. If that is not honored, we will introduce a resolution thereby effectively defunding the defense. And finally, we will introduce a resolution requiring the permanent separation of the roles of CFO and BA and prohibiting any one individual from serving in both positions at the same time. It is extremely regretful and disappointing that we have to respond this way. But the reason I went through those four major issues first before describing what our response will be is because I want people to know your town council has been ignored, and we refuse to be ignored any longer. Our will has been properly expressed in our votes. We expect this administration to honor it. I hope we can begin better dialogue, a more collaborative relationship. I hope we can begin to honor the will of the people as expressed through their duly elected representatives. And I think this moment should serve to refocus all of us on good governance. The four issues I outlined, the reason I and my colleagues have taken the position we've taken is not because of politics or personalities or vendettas. It is because of good governance. It is what you should expect of your elected officials, that we will not just hold each other accountable, but when we disagree, we will honor the will of the Democratic majority that expressed itself in that vote, however it went. I have lost plenty of votes in two plus years. I have not sought to discredit or deny or ignore the will of the council, and I don't think anyone should. So to that end, we are prepared to introduce those resolutions. I sincerely hope we don't have to. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman, Deborah Michael. I'm going to ask that the administration respond at the end of our public comment.
Sure.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
How do you follow that up? It's okay. I want to thank everyone for the advocacy for coming out to speak tonight, whether in person or on Zoom. I'm going to try to keep my comments brief because I do echo my council colleague's sentiments. So I'm going to address Ms. DiLorenzo specifically. Now, I had made myself very clear when I had voted no to the shared services agreement. And I stated why. I will never, I I am in support of shared services. I have voted yes to every shared services contract except for this specific shared services contract when it had to do with their dispatch. I will never sacrifice quality for our residents when it comes to public safety, specifically emergency services. Now, I have spoken to people in dispatch, I've spoken to people in OEM, Office of Emergency Management. I've spoken to people in the different levels of government who have told me that this will be detrimental to our community. If we get rid of our dispatch services right here in West Orange and have it moved to Livingston. And if that means I don't get elected again in four years, then that's fine because for me, I will never sacrifice quality. We all live here, and public safety, emergency services is key. When I make decisions, it's not because I have a political agenda or I'm worried about reelection. I'm not worried about reelection. I am worried about doing the right thing here and now in these four years. And the decisions I make aren't personal. It's not about being pro-administration. It's not about being anti-administration. It's simply about good government, and I've said this from day one, and I've said this when I was running. Now, in terms of political games, I'm not playing political games. I'm not a politician. I don't play games. I guess I am technically a politician because I won, but I'm a humanitarian. I'm a public administration servant. I received my master's in public administration, focusing on the leadership of public organizations. And I'm the only one up here that has nearly a decade of government experience working in public administration, on the town council, that is. So there is no personal issue. It's strictly good government. And I have an open communication. If anyone wants to talk to me and reach out to me, you can call me, email me. I'll give you my cell phone number. I'll meet with you in person. I have said this to other residents. I I meet with people frequently. I talk to residents. I'm very open and transparent about the things that I do and say and decisions I make. Now, I have to disagree. I know that you said the majority of town was pleased and that the majority of town supported the mayor. Yes, she did receive the most votes to win, but there were over 10,000 people who did not vote for her. And it's not about that. We're not here to rubber stamp, and we're not here for the mayor's agenda, and I ran with her. It's about good government, holding us all accountable. And I appreciate you coming out here, but facts do matter. And we're, and and I'm not here playing any political games. The future of our town is at stake, the future for our children, future residents. And to me, I lived here, I grew up here, I went to school with your son, I know you. So again, there's no political games here. And it's unfortunate because the mayor did post something on Facebook. And in her post, she didn't specifically specify that the shared services has to do with dispatch. She omits that information, so she's sharing a half-truth. And I spoke to her here tonight, and I told her that and how I felt. And I didn't think it was fair that she posted that without reaching out to any of us here to speak to us about this. She knows how I felt about my my vote, my decision. I made it clear. Everyone that's here tonight heard why I said no then. There's no political games. It's about the future of our residents. It's about doing the right thing for the people. It's not about winning the election. It's not about rubber stamping. I will never do that. For me, it's about good government. So that's where I stand with that. I think it's important that we work together. And so, hold on. Another thing is there are issues here within the administration. And for me, we ask questions because it's our due diligence. It's our obligation to the people to ask questions. And it feels like sometimes when we do ask questions, we are met by a resistance or we're not getting the information that we request. We are the governing body. We are the legislative branch. We are the checks and balance in government, good government. I had sent an email to the administration and was told that I would receive an email from our township attorney regarding special counsel. In the last meeting, Mr. Gross had stated that he had special counsel for us for our executive session. My only issue is that in the municipal code, it specifically states, and it's the first line, "Subject to governing body approval, the township attorney may appoint such special counsel." The reality was is this special counsel, this attorney, was not subject to governing body approval. They sprung him on us or the person on us last minute. And we didn't know who the person's, what the name, what the person's name was, what firm, or how much this person was getting paid, who sat through a very long meeting. If special counsel is going to be at this meeting, we should have had executive session first thing. And we should have been, and and again, special counsel should have been subject to governing body approval. I have asked the administration where this person came from, and they said that it was a township attorney that selected him. But again, municipal code, it's right here. Go in our code and look up special counsel, subject to governing body approval. We have to follow municipal code. It's our law, right? If if we don't, then what's the point of having it? So I really would like a response from the administration. Mr. Trank said that he would get me a response, and he has not. In this specific case, I feel like our township attorney should not select a special counsel. And I believe an RFQ should go out and that the governing body here should be part of the selection process in selecting an attorney, because there is a conflict of interest. Because it was a personal matter, and we were there because, I'm trying to say this, not violating executive session.
You've already done that, I think.
I don't think so, because he stated on the record that special counsel
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask that we yield to our township attorney.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna respond for this at length. Councilwoman Gagley, Michael, you repeatedly are giving basically your own legal opinions. And, you know, I can't, I don't know what to say.
So let me ask you.
I'm not gonna get into a back and forth with you. All I'm saying is that Mr. Gagliardi was properly hired. We stand by that and will defend that.
How was he properly hired if it was not subject to governing body approval? Can you please explain that to me?
No, I'm not going to give you legal advice.
It's not in the municipal code.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to give you legal advice in a public meeting. That's not a proper thing to do.
This is not right.
Okay.
So we are Councilwoman, Councilwoman, I'm just gonna ask you to move on. Thank you.
I'm going to continue. So I believe that RFQ should go out. The council as a whole should evaluate. I believe there's a conflict of interest. You said the person's name, I did not. So, okay, Mr. Gagliardi was our special counsel. So, okay, Mr. Gagliardi was our special counsel. And I believe it's conflict. He's not independent counsel. He's done work with this municipality and has close ties, which he, which was stated. So again, conflict of interest. We should look at having our own special counsel because we're in a situation within that personal matter because of the administration and township attorneys. And by the way, again, without violating executive session, the subject matter that was discussed, that person remained in the meeting. How was that? That person should have walked out or recused themselves. That didn't happen. Things are happening that aren't right. And when we ask questions, again, we're met with resistance or you give us the runaround or you refuse to answer questions. I just don't think that's right.
Councilwoman, that's all of you. You've just expressed your opinions as a layperson.
As a what?
As a layperson. You're not a lawyer.
Councilwoman, do you have, Councilwoman?
Because municipal code isn't being followed. Okay?
Again.
Again, subject to governing body approval.
Councilwoman, can you please move on? We, he's not gonna go back and forth with you. Thank you.
Again, I echo Councilman Rutherford's sentiments. You guys heard it here tonight. It's important to hold us accountable. It's important to hold elected officials accountable. It's important to hold our administration accountable. And when we do the wrong things and we're violating municipal code, it is not okay. And we have on several bases. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino.
You thought yours was hard to follow.
Just wanna do the right thing.
I know you do. I know you do. A lot, there's a lot of passion here this evening and rightfully so. We, we, you know, looking at 16% increase, um, which I don't think will, will be that high. Um, still way high enough. Uh, we have social media. We have, you know, just a lot of misinformation traveling in various circles. So with all that being said, I appreciate my colleagues frustration and I hear you and I talked to, to a few of you independently. And I've also, you know, administration has also felt my frustration the past months. There's been a lot of disconnect. The mayor's transition uh, has not been an easy one. And um, and I think a lot of that is due to uh, losing a lot of key personnel in the past few months. A lot of seasoned people retiring, taking their, uh, with, they're entitled to because they're, they're, they're public employees, their paid leave times. Uh, we have Mr. Lepore leave. We've had Mr. Dillon leave. We, you know, retire. Uh, numerous ones. And that has created a void in the township. And when we do get that organizational chart, which we requested and which we do get every year, this year it's late because again, with all these bodies leaving and reconfiguring with a new mayor, uh, everything's delayed. So again, we could disagree, but let, we need to look at some facts too. And the only thing I'm gonna say about that session, and I understand your frustration and I, I, I believe you with that, is that, um, you know, the attorney that did come in, whether, how you feel, why he was there, I think gave a very fair opinion because you were even pleased with that opinion because it's cited with what, you know, you, you, you guys were looking for. So I, I think to bring the gentleman in that way is, isn't fair because he, however, you don't like how he was brought here, I think he was fair in his, in his opinion. Um, anyway, with that being said, I don't want to talk in riddles because we deal with closed session. Um, we were not supposed to reveal that much information. Let's unpack a few things here this evening. I was really hoping not to speak too long and I'm gonna try to do my best because a lot of things were said. And thank you all for coming out. Thank you all for waiting to hear us tonight. And I'm not gonna go one by one. I'm gonna spare you that. But I do appreciate uh, everyone's uh, passion and their support. And yeah, 16%. I, I'm glad you came out. Uh, I would be disappointed if folks didn't come out after hearing that number. Uh, let me start with our, our, our staff that came out tonight. Uh, I did not agree with, um, I don't, I don't go on Facebook that much anymore. You know, got the texts with the, with the posts. I was disappointed with that post. I, 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 I don't want our, our staff to feel, uh, get caught up in what's, what may be going on. Um, but again, share service agreement, you know, not that I would vote for it because I never voted to privatize uh, custodians at the school board. I never voted to privatize, um, guess what else they want? Uh, bus drivers for, for students. And I, I doubt I would go here with emergency services. Um, but again, I do share responsibility. We still have to look at every possibility and that's what we have to do. And that's part of this job. Those are tough decisions. So you may get heat by the public that you have to look at something like that. But again, it's our job to calm our staff down, to let them know, we're not looking to fire you. We're not looking to lay anybody off. We have a tough budget. I'm sure staff is panicking to begin with because you hear 16% and you're worried about your job, especially if you were newly hired. So, you know, there's gonna be a lot of tough conversations in the next month or two. And we're all gonna have to buckle up and learn how to work with each other calmly and efficiently. Um, the budget, I spent, you know, you get this information. I know it's hard because, you know, we all have private lives. I spent five hours this weekend on this budget. I mean, there's 151 pages. I asked for a print. I hate scrolling down on a computer and writing notes. I was freaking out because that's not the way I, I roll. But um, you know, I just got my print copy here today. So I don't even have my little tabs on my notes. I have some notes here. I printed from my computer. But you know, and the, let's go back to 2018. We increased it 2%. Uh, 2019 was a bump of 8.29, 2020, 1.76%. In 2021, we gained a lot of revenue, working really hard for these grants. Especially the mayor. She's been, you know, that's her thing too. Um, 0.08% increase in our budget in 2021. Uh, 2022, 1.93%. So we've been boasting that we've been the lowest in Essex County in the past 10 years. And those are facts. This year, all that caught up with us. And again, I took my classes with the League of Municipalities. They tell you, do not go to zero. They tell you, you know, stay, you know, take two or, or go higher if you have to. They tell you this. So you don't get these bumps. But again, Mr. Gross explained at the last meeting, prior administration felt that we should keep the money in our pockets, especially during times of COVID when people weren't working. Now we're out of COVID. We got 16.2 that, you know, I know any of us are not gonna agree with that. Even, even administration I know needs to break this, uh, get this lower. Um, we're looking at a million dollar increase in our garbage and recycling collection. A million dollars because our contract, our five-year contract that thank God, we went five years, five years ago. Prior criticism was, why are you going for five years? Go for three years. Good thing we went five years because we would have been facing this two years ago when all, uh, the recycling issues came up. And now we're looking at, we're budgeting a million dollars, which are not firm numbers. But they're still doing their due diligence and that's a tough decision. Are we keeping the recycling? Are we keeping the, the garbage pickup the same? Obviously there needs to be a change here. You know, that's a big jump. Or is there support from the community? So we do want you to he, hear this. Transparency, we're not there yet. This is a preliminary. And I'm, administration heard, I was not happy the way this rolled out to the community because I knew there, I'm not shocked tonight that everybody's freaking out over this and rightfully so, because this is not the way we have done this. But again, they've been backed up because of all of these employees and all these voices. We just, Mr. Uh, Gross, uh, one didn't retire, but he lost, uh, one, his assistant in the finance department, a key person. Uh, and trying to hire folks. They're saying, well, why is there this void here? Trying to hire people. You know, you watch the news, you know, trying to get the, get people in here to work has, has been hard as well. And he finally hired a, a, a wonderful woman. Last week we, we met her. And she, again, that all takes time. And if you that work in the business world, you know, it takes time to get your folks up and running and your staff up and running. So, you know, we talk about public policy and pub, public experience. I've been doing this with the school board since, you know, almost the 16 years now. And it takes time. You know, people just don't roll in immediately gravitate to their jobs. They have to be trained. So a lot of this information that you're not getting in a timely fashion, again, I mean, you could talk to them. I, I hear it because um, maybe I'm a little more in tune with the staffing in the building and I, I know what's been going on. Uh, PERS went up, um, retirement. Uh, the one self-inflicted wound, I will say, and we can talk about this, that budget is the police and fire payback, uh, to the mayor's credit when she came in uh, with what happened last year with our police and fire, uh, with, with, with keeping them out with COVID. I did not support that at all. And um, so I'm glad we pay them. That's, you know, $759,000. Um, you know, we, their contracts, uh, went into play at 3%. Now law enforcement, Cynthia, good to see you and always thank you for your service. So law enforcement, as you know, that, that's negotiated. So the union, the union, you know, negotiated and settled to have those retiree benefits taken out. However, they agreed to a 457 retirement plan that we are contributing to. So, so we set up the new hires on a 4, uh, 457 retirement plan works like a 401K. And they contribute and we have the matching contribution. That's a new, uh, what is that, about $400,000 this year? So, so in essence, we're.
Yeah, we have, the administration was.
Yeah. I, I apologize, Council President. Um, so, you know, again, now, you know, in that conversation, we had some colleagues that didn't agree with that, that negotiation that the union settled because everybody said, go stay planned, stay planned, stay planned. Well, for the health insurance benefits. Well, good thing, good thing. We, they didn't negotiate that. That went up 22%. So we would have had another situation. Our health insurance increase was zero this year in the budget. So, you know, we went some, we lose some. Um, again, I spent five hours, five hours this weekend. It's, it's, it's all in here. It's all in here. We, you don't need a forensic audit. You need to read it line by line. And we do get audits done. Um, so anyway, I don't want to get it more caught up. Those were the key points I want to make. Do we have debt service increase because of properties we bought? Of course we did. Now we talk about Rock Spring, which I'll talk about in a minute because that was my vote. But we didn't talk about the movie studio, which everybody voted for last year that we still, still, here it is. I'm the, you know, I've been the only one advocating. Are we gonna go out for another bid? We need to do something about that because we still don't have a deal with the movie studio. So again, let's bring in everything that we've been doing, folks. Okay? So let's go to Rock Spring. Rock Spring 2019. There was support from this community for that transaction. We were very transparent. And we're gonna be transparent about the budget. There's gonna be another presentation. Last week, Mr. Uh, Gross ran through the numbers quickly at 11:30 at night. Again, I wasn't happy about that, but he needed to do something because he's behind. We've been in compliance and we're gonna have our workshop. We didn't even have our budget workshop yet. So I'm disappointed with my two colleagues that have been pouncing all, former colleagues that have been pouncing all over this because we haven't even had our input or our cuts made or any, and, any of that hasn't even occurred yet. So we always have our budget workshop. And after a budget workshop, administration comes back to us again. And then we have another opportunity to cut it down. We're not magicians, so I'm not giving false hope here. There's gonna be no 2%, there's not gonna be 2% this year. I could tell you that unless we cut jobs. And I'm not cutting police and fire. I'm gonna state that right now. I'm not cutting our police and firemen. Not doing it. And I know it's hard. It's a really tough year. Um, the school board, they, they had their bump. But again, you know, they put in a full day preschool, whether you, you, you support that or not. Again, you know, so they put it, you know, so there's a lot of benefits of what's getting put in, but now can every, can we pay for all this? And that, those are the, those are the questions that we're gonna have to ask all our entities. We could also increase our sewer tax. Do we want to do that or take the hit on the budget? So again, a lot of tough conversations that we need to have. And it's gonna be a very bumpy five to six weeks until we have, uh, till we have to get this budget finalized. Uh, with that, um, Rock Spring. So Rock Spring had public meetings, had a great deal of public support. Rock Spring, there was buyers just like there was for Carstman Country Club. We went ahead and bought 96 acres of Carstman Country Club. Did you see all those bids there?
Nope.
No. Did you, did you, were you on the committee?
I was.
Okay.
Five million dollars for that property selling all back tax.
So, so there, there, there you go. I know we're not supposed to go back and forth.
Thank you.
I apologize. My fault. But I, I want to give them the opportunity. So again, we don't mention those things. So Rock Spring, at the time, someone was buying it. So was, the choice was buy it. And, and, and Mayor Parisi, to his credit, was very articulate up there. A lot of people didn't like it. A lot of people in his room didn't support it. But at the time, he said, in order to pay it back, you're gonna have to carve a piece out and we're gonna have to do a small piece of development. Now, how do I know that was so supportive? I spent that summer of 2020, after the deal went through, with misinformation that was out in the community knocking on doors because that was my reelection. And what should have been five-minute conversations on people's doors, I was there for 20 minutes, half hours talking to the public. And um, again, we talk about, you know, you know, where we came in in elections and, and support. You know, I, I did very well that year in that race. So, um, and it's, it's not about that. It's just the point being that I'm a little sensitive when I talk about Rock Spring because there was many hours talking to the residents. So I know the pulse of the community was very supportive of that. Now we sit here and I'm disappointed with bringing up, you know, again, and the county wasn't gonna buy it at the time. And, and, and they, and it's no knock on the county. They were in a different position at the time. It was pre-COVID. Everybody was in a, a different position. We are only good with what we vote on, on the day we vote on it with the information that we have and what the situation is at that particular time. And at that particular time, that was the situation. Things changed. Could we get a better deal with, um, with Kemper? Yeah, I, I, I think we can. And that's something that we need to, to look at to bring in more revenues. Again, a lot of, a lot of tough conversations to have. Um, switching gears to Executive Drive. Executive Drive, just so folks know, Essex Green is full tax payments. Essex Green Shopping Plaza is not a redevelopment. 300 Executive Drive, that's over by Executive Drive, is not a redevelopment. That is full tax revenue. Now the things we don't talk about, what we get. So why would we, why would we do this crazy deal on Executive Drive? Why, why, why would we want to do a hundred million dollars are the figures that are out there? We never, no one ever mentions the 1.2 million in rental income that we receive. No one talks about the eight million dollar commercial building that we inherited for the new library. Whether you like the move on the library or not, they also given us 1. million dollars towards the renovation of that. They're gonna build a dog park and fix up the, the parking lot. Uh, we get 65 affordable houses that, again, we had this conversation a couple of meetings ago. We have obligations for affordable housing. We have to meet these obligations. So with the current site that's being built now, as you can see, is underway. And that will go up quick because one thing about Joe Alpert, he, he's quick. He is quick. He gets them done and they're beautiful. Um, 65, 100% affordable housing over there with 7,500 square feet to the community. To, to, we wanted a, 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 an annex. Great. If not, you know, we, we could decide then and have more meetings. So I just want to go back and I have, feel like I'm revisiting this every meeting and I apologize for the length, but the fact still for you folks that come here, you need to know the facts because obviously you came, you were upset. You need to know these details and these are the kind of details are why we make these decisions. We just don't make them in a vacuum. There's a lot that goes into this. Oh, wait, and I forgot the big one, Executive Drive. We were getting hit because we negotiated the deal, $4 million in tax appeals. So we did not get hit with $4 million in tax appeals because that went away once we did this deal. So again, once we did this deal. So again, another benefit. You don't do a redevelopment project if you don't have a benefit. Livingston on Route ten, redevelopment projects. Verona, two bu, two buildings there, not blighted, redevelopment projects. Roseland. Coawell. So again, I mentioned this every meeting because this is, this is why we make these decisions. Um.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask that, I'm gonna ask, because I was about to ask for there to be a little bit more quiet. You may not realize that it is resonating, but it is. So please, 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 no more interruptions and can we allow councilwoman to finish her uninterrupted remarks? Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Pastor Adams. I appreciate that. Um, okay, um, Mrs. Fisad, it was, it was great to see her this evening. Um, she's, she's come here a few times to advocate and rightfully so. Um. And uh, she always brings us, you know, great, great information. Um. Let me start with Popeyes and Sonic. You know, Egorock Avenue, growing up here, living on this side of town, going up Egorock Avenue, probably a million times a week. Um, we're not Route ten. So, but again, at the same token, we talk about what we should do. You know, I would love to go back to, I forget what was there years ago, a, a really good, successful restaurant. Gary's, that was, I know that, I'm her historian, of course, you would know that. Um, here's the truth matter, folks. I, I personally had somebody reach out to me, one of the, uh, doctors in, in town and they wanted to build a medical building there. Nothing huge, a modest medical building uh, for their practice. And they tried and the reason why they reached out to me, they could not, this owner would not call them back. The realtor would not get back to them with any answers. So again, there is something I know everybody would have wanted there. I was so excited. I reached out to Mayor Parisi. We try to reach out. Again, obviously, you know, whatever these franchises who have money for attorneys. Now let's, let's talk about all these lawsuits our investors get hit with. Who do you think could afford to do that? You don't think, I, I, I'm in the title business. I've sat in on a lot of closings and when I always ask, when I go to these closing, I'm in another town and, and they're, the closing is our neighbor. And I'm like, oh, why wouldn't you want to, would you want to invest in West Orange? It's expensive to invest here because they're also afraid of the lawsuits and the attorney fees and whatnot. So, you know, the per, the person that would give us that more of a mom and pop feel in some of these ask. Um, again, this is why you're seeing franchises. So there, this hopefully works all of this out. And I know an economic developer, marketing person is needed and will be helpful. But it's also not helpful that our, in our budget line item, that our, our consultant is only paid thirty thousand. So that means we didn't utilize them the way we needed to utilize them. And this is something that I had a, a long chat with the mayor. And the, the, you know, the, the planner is there. He's capable. But they're, they have to be utilized properly. And that means somebody full-time. Again, she'll have to make that decision. But you, again, it, it's, it has to do with how we utilize and spending the time with her administration and figuring all of this out. Um, Chief Abbott, there was talk before you walked in tonight, also from Ms. Fisad about the, the camp uh, bus. I just want folks to, to know, and you could speak when it's the administration's turn. I know you've been involved in a lot of calls with the state, so I know there was talk about who we could lobby. Chief's been on it. Um, he's had multiple calls. Um, you know, fo- fortunately they are, they, they keep, you know, they're, they keep telling us the, the ridership is not here. You know, but you could address that, uh, later when the administration speaks. I appreciate that. Um. And I think, let me see here, I just want to make sure I get these key points. And again, I, I appreciate, I, I, it's not the differences, it's just trying to give you some facts and different insight that you may not have. I mean, we sit here and we have to look at it and there's so many different levels. Um. You know, um, I want to address down on Columbia Street and you know, it's off of Washington Avenue in our downtown. So just so folks know, we applied, we didn't get a, a neighborhood preservation grant for that area. Um, and we're waiting for that grant to open up again. Ms. Brill did a lot of work a year and a half ago. It hasn't been available again. Um, uh, you know, other areas that are worse off than, believe it or not, than, than us had received it. Um, so we're hoping to reapply for that, but we were awarded a TAF grant by the federal government of seven hundred sixty thousand dollars and we don't have that money yet. Um, it's, as soon as we get it, I know, um, our township engineer is working on a plan for all new curbing and sidewalks. But I, I feel bad, uh, uh, for, is it Ms. Jerome? I'm not sure if I spelled her name right. Jen, oh, I feel bad for you, like, you're an industrial section of, of West Orange and we should not forget you, any of those homes that are there. I know we had Ms. Adams out multiple times because of garbage, you know, folks in that area. I don't know why they can't bag their garbage. They leave open cans and we get garbage everywhere and we've, we've been trying. They've been going back. Mr. Fonzino's been going back there. But also, um, I have to give our deputy mayor, uh, uh, um, Rod- Rodolfo Rodriguez, he has done a tremendous job with his fan- foundation in that, in that area. Um, I can't tell you how many, he's having another event soon with the, um, with Saint, bringing Saint Barnabas to our residents and with the COVID and, and, and food and toy drives and there's always something going on in that area. So maybe we have to, you know, reach out to some of the local leaders in your, in your neighborhood. Um, but yeah, we're, we're working on it. Uh, we're hoping to redo Washington School. I started the meeting off lobbying, uh, my, um, colleagues with the parking lot uh, at Abe Lando Lot that needs to be done. That would also, um, help us with permit parking there. That would take some parking off there. Um, also Ms. Valdez, I mentioned last meeting, but you brought it up again this meeting. If you didn't hear my answer, I'll try to send you an email. The Colgate Park was on a list, but at last year, the capital budget did not get passed when it was supposed to. There was you know, debating over that and it didn't get passed to the end of the year. And because of that, it pushed back Mr. Keo's ability to, to get all those bid specs out and working on that project. So um, that's coming, uh, let administration answer that. Um. And the last cannabis ordinance, I, I have to get a pair of eyes on it. It was everything that we said it was. Um, I've been sticked. I've been, I've been a stickler for the LLCs. Um, because that's been a problem throughout the town and, and the downtown with making sure we know, um, who or takes ownership of these properties. Because you can't reach them. Just perfect example, uh, look at Sonic and Popeyes. So with that being said, I think I said enough. Thank, thank you. And thank you for being patient with my comments tonight and my colleagues. I know there's a lot of passion. And, uh, we're just gonna have to work together and there's a lot to get done. So we'll just keep working it. Thank you, council president.
Thank you. Um, to the administration, there have been several, um, requests for commentary from myself as well as my colleagues. Um, can we take those one by one, um, so that you can respond to, uh, us as well as the public?
Sure.
Thank you.
I don't know if you wanna, did, did you want
Um, certainly. We can start with, um, New Jersey Transit.
Uh, New Jersey Transit, I, I actually, I, um, I know that, that the mayor this morning was, had conversations with, um, o- officials from NJ Transit continues to advocate for, um, um, increased service uh, along with areas that, that were missed. Uh, it's, it's a priority for us, uh, and we certainly take it serious. It's certainly, uh, something that, uh, um, we will continue to work on. Um, despite the fact that as of right now, we've, we've made, what, whatever progress was made. We believe that, that at this point in time, um, New Jersey Transit isn't poised to make any additional immediately, but we're gonna continue to pressure them to do so.
Colgate Park.
Um, I think, um, like, council woman Kathleen has said it right. I mean, the, the, our, our issues with, with our park improvements, um, have, were centered around the, the delays last year in, in approval of the capital budgets. Uh, those are now, uh, in, in process and you'll be seeing them come before you. They, you've already seen some of them and you will see more.
Pilots and, and West Orange.
Pilots and West Orange. Um, there's only, there's only one active in West Orange in terms of, of redevelopment, uh, pilots. There are numerous, uh, senior housing pilots. It's a different animal. Uh, it, you know, tho- those are statutorily, uh, are used for, for providing senior housing because of the fact of matter is the, by definition, the, the economics of, of inexpensive housing for, in that, that mode doesn't work with straight, straight taxes, not just in West Orange, but anywhere in the state. Um, that it, it is, uh, so tho- those really, you have to carve those out. Other than that, we have one active uh, and then one other approved and that would be for executive drive.
The zoning chairman position.
Um, my understanding of that is, is that there's, there's contrary legal opinions, uh, and I, I'll defer to uh, our counselor as far as anything further on that. Um. I mean, I think it was all discussed in the executive session. I don't think there's anything discussed at this point beyond that.
Um, BA CFO position.
Um, I'm wrong when, I'm wrong when to talk about it, but I, I'll tell you that my understanding is, and, and while I'm not firsthand knowledge of it, my understanding is, is that, um, there's an intention to present, um, some legislation to the council for consideration at the next meeting.
Cannabis ordinance.
Uh, that's really up to, up to the council. Uh, the, the, the council rules specify that in order to put up an ordinance, uh, there needs to be, um, a, a, a motion and acceptance of three members of the council to put it forward to, uh, that's what the, the ordinance says uh, in order to get it on the agenda. Uh, if you, I think the council, it's really important for the council to understand that individually, you, you, you can talk to each other one-to-one. You can't, obviously you can't, you have to be very careful about collaborating even, even in sequencing on the same topic. And I'd say, you know, an ordinance, uh, together that if, if, if three of you come up, you, you pass, pass an ordinance from one person to another with another one and the three of you converse on that, that probably is a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. You only have the authority to act when you're together. You have no authority to do anything individually. So, so the ordinance, you know, and I, I've read it, you know, a half dozen times, specifically says in order to, for the council put resolutions and ordinances on the agenda, at a meeting, there needs to be a motion that is, that is approved by three or more members. I've been on the council for two plus years and this is the first time that that's been expressed to the council.
And I've been watching for a decade and I've never heard any.
So I'm gonna just interrupt.
Contrary to everything.
Well, no, I'm just, you, you asked, look, to the extent that there's some conflict about, uh, 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 amongst, um, you all, frankly, um, you know, we then turn back to the, to the, to the ordinances. And you're asking how to do it and I've got to go, that's what the ordinance says. Now, if, if, obviously, if, if you all, you know, figure out on your own how to, how to make things work differently, that's really up to you, but I just warn you that, that you just gotta be careful with that.
Council president, my, my understanding had been that there were some competing versions of ordinance that people wanted to discuss. I had no problem with people providing each other with those copies, as long as there's no deliberation with respect to them. Because I thought it would save time, shorten the process. In the event that everybody could then read and see what the differences were, then you could, you know, come to a, a conclusion at a meeting. And I thought it was gonna be on, we're, we're not, not on the agenda as such, but we're new, new matters discussion. And I thought that was intended to happen at this meeting, frankly, I've and I, again, I wasn't at the last meeting fully. I was there remotely, but so I thought that it would save time by just distributing various versions and that was my instruction.
So, so if there's a version that wants to be suggested and there, and there's three votes, then, then, well, well, then you have to do it. Then you
It'll go on next term.
Well, you'll need to, you need to make a motion.
Okay.
All right. So, so what, what I am hearing and understanding, and I want to be very transparent about this body and how we respond to the administration. Just in kind, as we're demanding that the administration follow the rules, we have to follow them, whether they have been followed in the past or not. As the president of this council, if the ordinance certainly says that it has to be put to a vote for us to bring it back, I'm going to ensure that we do it properly, whether it has been done that way in the past or not. I did review the ordinance for council and how we govern and function, and it is required. Our business administrator, CFO, comptroller, has just advised that a motion needs to come from the floor for three votes for the version to be put back on if it's going to come from us. So under, under new business, we will make that motion if someone is, so chooses and we will revisit the cannabis ordinance. Thank you, councilwoman.
I have a question. Uh, back to your other point about the intention to present legislation regarding the CFO BA. Would you put it on only knowing that you'd have to get three votes or no?
I'm not really involved in it. I just, I'm aware that, that that's coming. I don't even know any details. So I can't answer, I can't answer any questions.
So what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, so you express that for anything to be put on the agenda would need three votes?
No, that's from us.
Oh, just from us. Okay.
That's from us. That's not for the administration.
It's very rare, it's very rare for a council to have, to in- institute a resolution or, or an ordinance. It come, they come from almost always the administration and that's the reason that.
Thank you for explaining. Okay.
Um, council members, I have gone through a list of the things that I captured as of questions. Is there anything that I may have missed?
Um, yes.
I, I, I would like to address, eh, well, I mean, I certainly will take questions, but then, that, there's a couple of things I'd like.
Okay, certainly.
Uh, my question regarding special counsel still wasn't answered when it clearly
Okay, so we're, we're not gonna go back and forth with that. If you have any additional questions regarding that, because our council has indicated that he's not gonna go back and forth.
Council president, isn't she entitled to ask her questions? She is allowed to ask her questions.
How he was selected, how did, how much he was getting paid? What is RFQ process? Because again, it was not subject to governing body approval. I think these are very clear questions we're asking and clearly it wasn't subject to governing body approval. I, I don't understand.
It's, the reason is because the, the amount is below the bid threshold, so it doesn't have to go before, for council approval.
It doesn't say that.
Get into a back
On the municipal code.
Okay, are you gonna let him talk or you
Get into a back and forth about it. The reason that it, it didn't have to go before council board approval is because it's below the bid threshold. That's my understanding and I didn't do this, but I believe that's, was Mr. Trank's rationale. I think he's correct. So it's that simple.
Can we get that in writing?
Because I didn't see that in this, in the, when I, when I, when I looked up in the municipal code under special counsel and never mentioned a bid threshold. The first, very first few words says, subject to governing body approval.
A conflict. Can we get that in writing?
But there was.
Can that be provided?
I put in my email to you guys.
I think, I think that the legal decision was that there was no conflict.
No, no. So, um, it's my understanding that, not, so I think we're talking past each other. Town council is allowed to hire their own special counsel when there is a conflict between the town council and the administration. That's the conflict that, uh, our municipal clerk was referencing. What councilwoman Deborah Michael is referencing is special counsel being brought in for the purpose of advising town council. In that particular case, the municipal code says it, it starts out that way, subject to governing body approval. So even if it's below the bid threshold, it still is subject to governing body approval and that's the point that she's trying to make. We were not involved in that decision at all.
And again, I don't, I don't want to give legal advice in a public meeting. That is not a thing that lawyers are supposed to do. It's an attorney-client privilege. It ought to be considered outside of a public meeting and whether it's in writing or orally, you know, the advice given.
I'm gonna request that we have a executive session to address any additional concerns at the next meeting. Is that satisfactory, councilwoman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Uh, Mr. Gross, you have some additional comments. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say something, um, a, a, a little bit about, uh, more about the budget as, as, as you are aware, at, at. Seems so long ago, um, the, not the last meeting, but I think the meeting before that. Um, we had a late night meeting and, and I did a presentation just to. Bring, um, the council up to speed as to where we were, uh, an overview and the public. Um, you know, the, 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 the administration is, is completely in agreement. On the level of, of transparency that, uh, we are providing, uh, for this process. Um, we, 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 we did a, a presentation, um. Back then, you know, are, are, have we, we've been searching for solutions to this. Longer than, than perhaps we normally would because of the nature of this deficit. Um, so we've been working very hard to try to get to the point. We, we, a week ago today, we sent the budget to the council. Uh, and as is, has always been our practice, and maybe that's something we should have asked you about, but it's always been our practice. Uh, we have always waited some period of time before we posted budgets online. To give the council a chance to look through them themselves, the courtesy, to be able to look through them. Before they start getting questions from the public, what does this mean? What does that mean, you know, a- about it? So to the extent that we, uh, delayed some period of time. Of, to, to, for posting it on, on the website, frankly, was out of respect for the council. Uh, and if that was a mistake, then I'll apologize to the council for that, but it certainly was in no way. Um, a, 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 a measure to, to, um, not be transparent. In fact, when you look at the document and when you go through it, and coun- councilwoman Castellino said it. That, there's no municipality that I know of that provides more information. To the governing body about the, the details of our financial conditions than, than we do. Um, most do not provide anywhere near the level of detail that we provide you. Um, so I, I am certain that an objective and, um, uh, dispassionate look at the budget. Will reveal that, and we're, we're, we're anxious to sit down and to get working with you to try to figure out. The, the, the solutions. I understand that, the, the concerns, the, the mayor, as you, as I think you all know. Um, is very much into collaboration, and her desire here is to work, have the administration work with the council. In what is going to be the most difficult. Um, budget that any of you will, um, experience hopefully in your, your cur- your career. Um, and, and to come up with solutions. In order to come up with solutions. It is going to take the cooperation and collaboration of the administration and the council in order to do that. Um, because it is going to, going to mean prioritizing. Policies and programs and such, so that, that when you consider the alternatives that go into. Solving this particular budget problem, you, you're, you're going to have to consider. Cuts in programming, you're gonna have to consider cuts in staffing, you're gonna have to consider al- alternative revenues. And you're gonna have to consider the impact of, of the utilization of reserves. Um, on, on, on our bond rating. So there's a lot of factors that are going into this, and it is, it impacts everyone, all of us here, all of the community. And the only way that we're gonna get through this successfully is to work collaboratively together. And the administration is committed to do that.
Thank you. Okay, deep breath, let's move on. Uh. Madam clerk.
Hey, cause, uh, consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, and executive session.
Public meeting, correction to the minutes, and we did not have liaison announcements at the last meeting.
Oh, okay, let me just make a note of that.
Didn't?
No. Okay, I will take that out.
Thank you.
Um, so as amended, public meeting and executive session, April eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
Consent.
We, report of township officers, none, reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills list, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Um, I would know, I would like to pull that please, cause we just received, uh, the bill list for December of twenty twenty-two. Through April twenty twenty-three, Friday evening, there's not enough time to go through everything line by line, and I just received tonight. A, a printout version of them, so I'd like time to go through it and ask the questions that I have for the next meeting, please.
Can the administration advise whether or not that will be on any of our vendors?
If, if, if there are, if, look, if, if there's a majority of the council that, that wants to pass the, you know, the bills list, obviously. We would like to move forward with that. We, we, we've certified them. Um, if, if indeed there's, you know, any, any, any bills within, uh, there that were required to pay before the next meeting. Uh, we would do that, and, and so, don't, no one will be damaged, you know, damaged from that.
Okay.
Um, but, um, again, you know.
Will we, will we be getting an additional bills list before the next meeting?
You will get another one, the new, the next new one.
Okay, so that means we'll have.
You're gonna, you're gonna, the only reason you didn't get them before, and we should, it's, it's worth talking about, is that, that. Um, on, on, at the turn of, turn of the new year, with, with, with closing out the previous year's books. Uh, we can't really generate a new bills list, uh, during that period of time. And this particular year between staffing and, and frankly, we had some, some, um. IT issue, the incompatibility with some of our software that developed, um, and that, that we're working on. Actually looking for new software, so that this doesn't, it doesn't happen anymore. Uh, and as, as, as well as just doing the closeout. Uh, that, that has always delayed our process of, of getting the bills lists out. So that, you know, from this point forward, for the rest of the year, you're, you'll have a bills list at every meeting.
Um, councilwoman, will you have an opportunity to review the, um, current bills list and the new bills list so that we can continue to move forward?
Right now?
At the nick, before the next meeting? You're asking that this be pulled?
Yes, for, in order, so I can review it, and then it be placed on the next meeting, so I can.
So do we, along with the new one that comes through?
So, but the new one will only be a couple of weeks, right? Because we're getting everything up to, correct? So that's fine, but this is literally, look, I mean, look how many pages.
It's a, it's a bills list. It's really consistent with what we get on a regular basis.
But we've just got four or five months worth of bill list that I'd like to take the time to review before I can.
I heard you. Yes, I need the time as well.
Thank you so much.
I, I have a different issue.
With the bills list?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that's been moved improperly second, so pull the bills list. So is there discussion, and now you can?
Well, can I make a recommendation? Is there? Are you two prepared to move the bills list? Cause if there's a majority, you can always get your questions answered.
I, I am not.
No, I'm, that's, that, so it's been moved improperly second to pull the bills list. Is there discussion?
Yeah, um, so I'm in favor of pulling it, but, uh, for a different reason, but in addition to that reason. Um, we're asked to approve this bills list when we know there is inherent conflict of interest in the CFO BA. We've got to solve that issue. I, I'm not accusing, and I don't want anyone, especially you, to, uh, misconstrue what I'm saying. I'm not saying that you've done something wrong with the bills. I'm not saying accusing you of anything, right? I want to be very clear. But we are now aware of the inherent conflict in the role. And to approve the payment when we know the mechanism for making the payment has a conflict, I think is, I think is improper. Uh, so we need to resolve that so that we can move forward and obviously, you know, pay these bills in a timely fashion. So that, that's the second reason why.
So I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll address the, the, um. The, not the underlying issue, but the, the, you know, the practical side of that. Look, if the council decides that they're not gonna approve bill, the bill list for any reason, at some point in time, I have an obligation to make payments. Uh, on a timely basis, and, and we'll do so, um, just as long as you understand that, then we'll. You know, I, I just want you, I do want you to understand that.
So I understand that, but I, I wanted to be clear about at least my role in facilitating that. Um, and that is, I think, something that needs to be resolved. So that's why I'm taking this position.
Okay, is, um, it's been moved improperly second, the discussion has occurred.
Yeah, my discussion is, listen, I, I know we get a lot of information. I know everybody has busy lives. But you have to find, carve time out to get it done over the weekend. I, I, you know, it's not. Always in big groups of information, but listen, I had eight million things to go do this weekend, but I. I had to take the time, cause I know I didn't have the time Monday or Tuesday, so. You, you gotta, gotta carve out what, what you can, um. I mean, when I was on the school board, I got mountains of even more paperwork than this with contracts, cause we. Were in charge of administration stuff there, so I, I, I don't know, that's, I'm just gonna say that.
Um, madam clerk, the vote? Um, councilwoman Castellino to pull?
No.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Standing.
Uh, resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, can we ask for questions before we start pulling resolutions? Are there questions regarding any of the resolutions?
I have a question on one sixty-nine. Um, is this the only response to, to the RFQ? This is for the public, uh, health nurse?
Yeah, so it was the only one.
I have a question regarding that, and I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a typo. Um. She's going to be paid eighty hours, eighty dollars per hour at approximately eight hours per week totaling twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty, but when I did the math. At six forty a week, times fifty-two weeks is thirty-three thousand two hundred eighty. So I just want to make sure there isn't a typo there, um, with the number. And that it is what you stated it is.
Well, I'll, I'll have to.
I have a question.
About the same, yeah.
I just want to know what portion was the grant and what portion are we paying?
That was my question too.
Yeah. Said that it's a grant, partial grant, so I was wondering how much was the grant and how much are we paying for this first?
It says it in the bottom of that first, whereas in part will fund the township's retention of a licensed nurse practitioner. I'd like to also know what our part of that is.
This would be for thirty-nine weeks, as it is.
Okay.
So, this, the, the twenty-four, the twenty-four nine sixty. And wh- wh- this, this is all you're authorizing, so it's gonna be this amount at eighty dollars a month.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a typo, that's all.
Yeah, and I just want to know what part are we funding and what part is the grant?
It's all, uh, it's all, it's all for the grant.
It said partial. Sorry? It said partial in the whereat, in the, when, in the amendment, in the resolution.
No.
It said partial.
If you look at that last sentence, the last part of the first whereas clause. Uh, reading, it says, um. Well, I'll just back up a little while. Following its award of a grant from the New Jersey Association of County and City Health Officials called the Enhancing Local Public Health. Infrastructure Grant, which in part will fund the township's retention of a licensed nurse practitioner. To provide nurse services. Does that imply that there is a part of that that will not be funded by the grant?
This is, this, this grant is paying for all of us. So.
Could you confirm that and just let us know?
Well, I will, I will, I, I would ask you to approve it on that basis if, if there's.
That there's no contribution from the township.
And just a comment, I love that she's a West Orange resident.
Same here.
I, I love that, that's great.
Thank you. Um, any other questions regarding any of the?
Yes, uh, one seventy-one. Temporary budget appropriation.
You wanna pull it or you wanna?
I wanna, I have questions.
Okay.
I mean, I, I may vote no one.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, so then I'll pull, I'll pull that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Um, on resolutions, no.
Thank you. Um, madam clerk.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Councilman Rutherford, you pulled one seventy-one dash twenty-three, resolution authorizing a temporary budget appropriation.
I, um, sure, I want to go through several of these items, some I just don't understand.
So maybe, maybe first, if I can describe what it is, and maybe that'll stop, answer some of your questions.
Sure.
This is, um, uh, last year's budget. Uh, and it, it, in, when, or the, our first budget was, is twenty, twenty-six point two-five percent, that's the statute. That calls for, uh, of, of the previous year's budget. This is fifty-two point five. Which is double that, basically gets us through the next three month, you know, for, through the three month period, uh, until you adopt the budget. So the, the numbers themselves are, you know, completely were vetted from last year's budget. Um, and that's, that's where they come from.
Sure, and I, I, I appreciate that explanation. You, you gave that to me earlier, so I do appreciate, uh, the consistency. Just wanted to know, uh, the first item on there is a four fifty-seven contribution plan. Um, my understanding, that is a part of the retirement, uh, benefits that we, uh, provide for our employees. Have all of our, uh, retired firefighters received their full compensation for their, uh, retirement benefits?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
That's who I'm referencing, he knows who I'm talking about.
Yeah. I think that's still in the spirit.
I get it, council president.
I, 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 I'm not commenting on, on any other claims that there, that have been made. Um, in terms of our calculations of their, they've been paid up, so.
Excellent. Um, for the, uh, debt service, uh, can you just, uh, both for my benefit again? I know you explained it once, but also for the benefit of the public, uh, you know, tell us exactly what these one, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, this is, uh, page one of the temporary budget where it's itemized.
Okay.
At the bottom.
Yep.
So can we start with the, uh, band principal, two hundred and fifty-two thousand thirty-four dollars and five cents?
But what's your question?
Can, can you just tell us what these are for and, and?
Band principal is to pay down.
Well, all of it as a category. We had this conversation, so the, the same exact answer you gave me earlier, I think would suffice here.
Okay. Um, this, this is our, this is our, our bond anticipation notes. Bands are our bond anticipation notes, that's our short-term borrowings. Uh, it's either interest or principal, uh, and that allows us to pay down.
And, 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 and so this, these are debts, this is debt service. That was approved based on last year's operational budget.
It's just, yeah, it doesn't even, it's, it's not, um, we, we will, before, before the end of, of.
Second quarter.
Sometime in June.
Mm-hmm.
We, we will come back with refined numbers, because this is, this is fifty-two and a half percent, and the world doesn't work that way. You know, or, you know, there, there's different rations, so we, we have payments coming later on, that we'll have to amend that.
So can you confirm it's just a placeholder until, right?
Well, it's not a placeholder, it, it, but it, but it, it's a budget. I mean, we have to have a budget. You know, I started to mention earlier that, that the, the budgeting system in New Jersey is extremely conservative. And a bit archaic, and, and so in, instead of having a budget and adopting a budget. Before the budget year starts in New Jersey, and it has more to do with the fact that they don't, they don't, we don't get our state aid until July. Uh, and it's not set until July. Um, the, the, in New Jersey, basically, we have to run. Temporary budgets until everything gets into place, and then, then we go to a permanent budget. And that, and that's when you, when, when you ultimately adopt, that's the permanent budget, and these go away.
Thank you.
And you advise the Dover ILSA, thirty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-one, thirty-nine. What is that?
That's the, uh, interlocal service agreement they have for the first year, half of the year.
So we pay them or they pay us?
They pay us.
But it, it, isn't this what we're paying?
Well, there's, there's, everything. Well, there's, there's, everything, everything you do, there's a, there's a, there's a revenue and a, and an expense. So the, the expense is what drives, you know, what drives, and then a revenue reduces the, the tax obligation. So every, whatever you have in there, it's on both sides.
Revenue is separate, that's what they pay, pay out.
So we pay out to Dover thirty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-one?
No, 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 in terms of, we, we get, we get that money, but we attribute some of our expenses to Dover. We attribute the expenses to it.
Our expenses is thirty-five thousand.
It's an offset.
Uh, what about the deferred charges out of cap? Can you explain that?
So, so, um, perfect example, deferred charge, we just did two and a half million dollar deferred charge.
Mm-hmm.
What that means is deferred charge is a promise to pay you later. So, um, the, the, um, this two and a half million dollars, we're, we'll pay that back over a five-year period at five hundred thousand dollars. And that, that could, the line item that's in, that's gonna be in the next year's budget is five hundred thousand. Will be five, a deferred charge of five hundred thousand dollars for that year. So it's, 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 it's not, it's not considered debt service, but it is a way to pay down the, the special emergencies.
Okay.
And out of cap refers to whether or not it's within that two percent, or can you explain that?
Yes. Everything that we're talking about is, would be out of cap. We, we don't have any deferred charges in cap. Uh, or rare, very rarely, shouldn't say never, very rarely do we have them in cap, but in cap, that has to do with the, the, the spending cap, which is not a two percent, it's actually three and a, up to three and a half percent.
Three and a half, okay. Wanted to know on the garbage, um, so my quick calculation, and it is not exact, is about one point nine million. And I've, I, I thought our contract was like two point eight or so, two point six or two point eight?
It's about four million dollars over, all, altogether, or it was four million dollars altogether for, for the year. Um, and there's different components, so the contract itself, for instance, we don't contract for, for the, the tonnage.
Hmm.
So that, I think what you're never, what you're thinking of is the tonnage was, isn't included in that contract, and you're right. But, 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 but from our line item point of view, it is included.
Alright. Um, I, I think I understand that, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
David, we, we pay somebody to haul it?
Yeah, I mean, I understand the part, we're not paying for the, for the actual amount that we're dropping into the landfill. In the contract, we pay that outside of the contract based on what the actual amount is. Right. Okay, I mean, obviously they pay it and then we pay them.
Right.
Yeah. Um, okay, so legal services, what, what, what is this? Oh, you know.
Specifically.
Is that, is that, what is that?
Which on operating?
Both, operating expense and salary and wages.
Uh, that's this, that's, um, um, Mr. Trank and
Alice Byrne.
Mr., um,
Kaiser.
Mr. Kaiser and our prosecutor, um, of, you know.
Isn't the zoning in there seven thousand, sir?
Public defender, yeah, public function. What's that?
Isn't the zoning in there, the zoning?
Isn't, wouldn't zoning be under planning and development, or are the planning in D E?
I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm.
Is it, is the zoning board or the planning board attorney included in that number? Both of them are? Both of them are, okay.
Under legal service.
So according to Mr. Gross, all of them, I'm sorry?
Yeah. Is this great?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have more questions?
Yes. Accor- according, so just for clarification, according to Mr. Gross, all of our attorneys in, in town are included in that number.
Yes.
Okay. Um.
In, in terms of their, uh, uh, in, in terms of their contractual salaries.
Right, not the contract that they get for the, the professional services awards that we just went through, uh, meeting a tool ago.
Right.
Are there any other questions on that page, John?
Uh, yes, well, uh, could you explain the maintenance free public library operating expense for one point eight million?
Um. They get, we, we have between the support of Ten Rooney, uh, and the, the library. The, you know, library is about two point one million altogether for the whole year. And we, we estimate the, we, we have one point two budgeted for, for Ten Rooney, which includes our support of the, of our tenants there as well as any, um, uh, improvements or, and, or repairs that need be done at, at that facility, so.
What do we do to support tenants? What is supportive of the tenants?
Just, alright.
We have a contract, we have a occupant on the top floor of that building that pays us to be there. It's a ten-year contract. I don't know how many years it left in that contract.
Well, what she's, yeah, what she's asking though is, and that's the buyer system and the, all of those things.
Spender, we have expenses.
It's, it's, it's the garbage, it's, it's all the support for, for that, um, uh, building.
Thank you.
Is it, are the add-ons in there for the life, are the add-on, the change orders and all that in that?
No, that's not, that's not the construction. That's just their norm, that's their operating cost.
What about, uh, the reorganization plan listed here for twenty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-nine? Can you explain what you mean by reorganization plan?
Uh, last year, there was a reorganization plan of
What did that mean?
It was a, um, a, a plan that we put together to try to deal with um, some of the social, social equity issues in terms of, uh, our management staff um, that, you know, in order to do salary adjustments. So that was for last year. We're not, we're not, we won't use that this year, but, you know, since we based it off of last year's budget, it's there.
So it's contractual, right? Is that what you're saying, or?
It is, but there's nothing in it for this year. There's no, there's no, there, there's no reorganization plan this year. It's just we used last year's, we just used, it's, it's, it's in there as a line.
Yeah.
Um, but it's not in there as a, a, a carry-through as an expense.
Those were the, uh, salary guides that we reviewed.
Got it, cause I thought I saw, cause I also reviewed the
Well, it's in there for the previous, you know, there was your budget will show last year and then the character.
Uh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought I saw, um, just give me a moment.
We may have changed the category. I don't remember.
Excuse me, quick question, while you're looking, yeah, if you don't mind.
Yes.
So in this budget, I didn't see too many in years past. Sometimes you transfer, like you take out of one category because you've been trying to clean up the, the categories. Did you have any of those? Yeah, some of it, I saw. Yeah, yeah, they looked a little more obvious than yours.
Yeah, yeah, I, well, I changed the format a little bit this year to, to try to give you more information about the
Yeah, it was helpful.
Uh, and, and, and I thought in that new format, I think worked better for, for that as well.
Yeah, just maybe explain to them, um, where they see zero was spent, sometimes he'll move it to a different category in a, in the budget, transcript.
I found what I was looking for. So you stated that for the reorganization plan, it would zero for twenty-twenty-three, but in the budget, it's seven hundred fifty-nine thousand.
Oh, that's the, that's
For the department request, um.
That is for, so that, there, that must be a typo that didn't carry over, not, not the amount, but the, that's, that's the, that's the firefighters back then.
The seven hundred fifty-nine thousand? Okay, thank you for explaining that, okay. So it was confusing.
It's, it's gotta be something else too, because I thought that was like, I know it's a minor number, but it's still off. It was seven, maybe I'm wrong. I thought it was seven fifty-eight and change, or seven fifty-six and change, but I guess we'll get to the bottom of that. Um. Yes, uh, street salt and chloride, five hundred seventy-one thousand seven sixty-eight eighty-eight. Uh, two things, one, it was, it's listed on here twice. I, is that, and then I don't
Some of them are.
It's on the, the same page, which is the second to last page.
So from, from street salt to street service to, um, and then if you go back down to county, town council, to township lit- litigation.
Yep.
It's mentioned twice, including tax appeals.
How are those the?
Tax assessors.
Yeah, you got the private, yeah, we have two different types. You have, you have what we, what we spend and then we would do reimbursements to, to private entities.
But, but it doesn't show that here. It shows the exact same number, so it looks like a typo. Like, here, I'll show you.
Five seventy-one, seven sixty-eight, eighty-eight, both times.
Listen, I have it once here, salt and
No, no, look, you have salt, right, and street salt?
Yeah.
You have street salt again right here.
Same number, or maybe they
Tax assessor, tax assessor, tax appeals, tax assessor, tax assessor, telephone communications, telephone communication.
Right. It's like it was
Same thing.
It's, 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 it goes copy and paste in here twice.
Oh, that made the
Yeah, I just, it
Yeah, council, the clerk, litigation.
I still don't see what you all see, can somebody?
That, that should, that's, the duplicate should come, so you can move to take out duplicates.
Okay, so.
I'll send your advice.
It's almost like copy and paste.
Yeah, and it goes all the way through West Orange Arts Council. So from
Yeah, as a matter of fact, all that comes out.
From street salt all the way to West Orange Arts Council is duplicated.
Yeah, it is, so I, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so how does that impact our numbers? Because
It doesn't, it doesn't impact your, the, the total.
It does not.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, uh, it's in the spreadsheet itself, there was, uh, it got duplicated.
So it's still
So how do we spend five hundred seventy-one thousand for street salt in a winter with no snow?
That's what we budgeted.
That's what we budgeted?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got
And we spent, we, we usually spend a lot more even than what we budget, we under-budget that all the time, because frankly, if we over-budget it, 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 it we, we would, we would have ended up dri- driving up taxes.
But there's a ton, there's a ton of salt sitting around somewhere.
It's not just salt, it's not just salt, it's the application of the salt, it's the contractors to go, um, that actually go out on the road that we pay to, to, to put salt down.
No, I get it, but because we didn't do that, we should, we should have
We, we still, you, you're mistaking, we don't do it, we do a lot of it. I mean, you have, you have a small, whether you have a big storm or a small storm, the salting, it goes on in the beginning. So the salting is all the, the beginning part of a storm. It's the, it's the snow removal that, that we didn't have.
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, because we had two snow days this year, um, what was the cost to salt those two days, I guess, or?
I mean, I, we, we, I'm sure I can put that together.
Okay, you make sure if that's a question you want an answer to, that you put it in writing and send it to the administration so that they can respond.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just, you know, I just, um, concerned about that amount in the warmest winter on record. Seventy degrees.
Zero degrees in a couple times. I know my heart is first.
But it was clearly not a normal winter.
And I, that's, again, this is, this is what was budgeted, not what was spent. I think, I think most of it was spent, to be honest with you. But, but I'll, I, you know, we, we certainly, when we get into the budget, we can, we can provide you that information.
Alright, and then this township litigation, this is, uh, my last one.
Yes.
Township litigation, what, what, what? That is for money that we budgeted that is, has already been spent?
This is a budget, this is the, the budget for this year. So this is, um, not, not the spent for this year, this is the budget. So we, it is based on fifty-two percent of last year's budget, so hmm, not sure.
So I am, I am concerned that we are still litigating certain things. I understand, Mr. Kaiser, this sounds like nails on the chalkboard to him. Um, and I am interested in not funding that. So how do we, how do we, is there a mechanism? A, a prop, a legal way to stop this budget item right here? I know what we, we approved it last year, I get that. Is there something we can do now to stop that?
Well, you're talking about two different things. The, the temporary budget, my understanding has always been it's twenty-five percent of last year's budget, whatever that budget was.
We're into the next quarter now, so it's
Well, so it's more, but, um, but, so it's not a, it doesn't mean you're gonna spend that money. It just means you're appropriating it so that if, if it was spent, was encouraged, were encouraged, you would have the money to pay it, that's all, that's my understanding.
I have a question regarding township litigation. Who is our township litigation attorney?
Several.
Well, you, you have not
Only one.
Many.
Well, I, the reason why I ask is, if you can jog my memory, I believe when we had that meeting with professional services contracts, that was, ended two fourteen in the morning.
You've already authorized.
No, no, I understand that, but my, what I'm asking is, I think that there is only one firm for litigation.
No, there are many, many attorneys handling litigation.
I remember several for labor.
I handled litigation years ago, um, I haven't done it in several years, but I used to handle some of the litigation. Mr. Trank handles some litigation, his firm handles some litigation, other firms that we hire handle lit- litigation. It, it's not a, it's not a one firm thing. Tax appeal attorneys.
Got it, okay. I think I was just
I understand what you're concerned.
Broadly, because
I do wonder where, where you're coming from.
How to litigation.
But I, 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 to try to throttle administration, um, it, 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 it's only gonna put township in jeopardy, because when I need an attorney, when I need an opinion on something, I've got to get it. I mean, if, if something comes up, it's, you know, if I've got a, a, a question, uh, if, if I've got a question, um, I had one today. And I have to pick up, I have to pick up the phone and, and call the, the labor attorney that you've approved.
Mm-hmm.
I have to be able to do that. And, and if you try to throttle us, uh, I, I mean, at, at this point, um, with, through this, um, that, that's only gonna turn into disaster ultimately, because it, it
So I'm glad you understand where I'm coming from, right? Because it's not about, um, stopping the ability to perform the functions of government. It is about honoring the will of the, the, the council with regard to specific uh, contracts, one of which is litigation. So, you know, that's the point, right? Like, we don't wanna have to do this every meeting. We don't wanna spend an extra five minutes, we're already eleven, almost twelve o'clock already, right, eleven-thirty, so. But that is the point, and I'm glad you understand the point. I'm glad the point was well received, because that's exactly the point where I'm trying to make.
Okay, I think we're clear. Any other questions?
Yes, the town council operating expense, um, in the budget, we didn't spend any money last year, we don't seem to have
The town council, that's your salary?
No, there's town council salary and wages below that, this is the operating expense, um.
That's hard.
I just wanna, I just wanna confirm, because when I looked at the budget for, uh, twenty-nine three, it says all zero.
Some years, some years it all gets spent, some years none gets spent.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, can we approve this, our general consent?
Well, we already did that, this is, this was pulled. So I need a motion to approve.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Oh, yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Ordinance is on first reading.
Alright, um, here we go, let's go, our first reading. Alright.
This is gonna be painful.
Ordinance twenty-seven forty-three dash twenty-three, and ordinance amending chapter four, section eleven point four of the revised general ordinance of the township of West Orange, shopping carts impounding fee.
Sir, motion?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
So the council president, can you, can you, can you just explain to the public why we're gonna rush through this?
Oh, absolutely, I apologize. To the public, just in case you're concerned, this is the first reading of these ordinances. On first reading, typically, we do not have discussion. The public is allowed to have any type of public comment, ask questions on second and final reading. Uh, thank you for your, uh, understanding, as we do try to move quickly, um, through about twenty, uh, seven uh, ordinances. And also just to educate the public as well, these were all, um, resolutions that we Uh, ordinances. And also just to educate the public as well, these were all um resolutions that we changed to ordinances so that the town council will be able to adjust these fees simply um. Just with a uh consent.
Resolution.
Of ordinances.
It's the other way around. These are ordinances that will allow us to use resolution to set the fees in the future.
Thank you.
And and none of what we do tonight actually sets the fee. I know, that's for the public's benefit. What we're doing is not setting the fee, but allowing for an easier mechanism to do it.
Correct.
Yes, and the fees will come back to us, as I had indicated in my public comment and announcements. Um, certainly, I would like to see when these uh fees are adjusted and that we are in sync with um. Other communities so that we are not excessive. Ordinance at twenty seven forty four dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter four, section twenty point three of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange insufficient fund service charge.
Sir, motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Tammy, I mean, yes.
Yes, you are Tammy.
Twenty seven forty five dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section one point one four of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, general licenses, procedures, fee schedule.
Some of.
Second. You guys.
Uh, Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Deborah Michael. Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes. Twenty seven forty six dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section two point four of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, peddlers, commercial permit, application and fee advertisement.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes. Twenty seven forty seven dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter four, section twenty nine point two of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, parking of residential vehicles prohibited.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Tammy, twen- I mean, yes. Twenty seven forty eight dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter four, section thirty four point three of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, extra duty employment for police officers, rates of compensation, administrative fees, payment for services.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven forty nine dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section three point three of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, transient merchants, license fee, payment before sale, terms of license.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah. Council President Williams.
Yes. Twenty seven fifty dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section five point one of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, auctioneer's license required.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven fifty one dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section six point four of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, theaters issuance of license fee.
Some of.
Second.
Oh, thank you. Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven fifty two dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section seven point two of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, public dance halls and public dances licensed required.
So move.
Second.
Talk about old ordinance.
Right.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven fifty three dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section eight point three of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, retail food establishment fees.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven fifty four dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section nine point two of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, food and beverage vending machines, permit and license fees.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven fifty five dash twenty three is omitted but should be there and ordinance amending chapter five, section twelve point ten of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange jukeboxes.
So move. Happy days.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven fifty six dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section twelve point five of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, mechanical and electronic amusement devices licensed required.
I move.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so it says that there's only a maximum of five that you can have, um five uh equip, pieces of equipment, devices?
Right, that's for a game.
Is that for? That's for a carnival. So if you were to have a.
No, I think it's for a game. That's for like, you know, if some bars have them, you know, they have like the little, like gaming devices or whatever. Yeah, that's, it's not for a carnival.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you.
That's regulated by the state. We used to have a game room in town years ago on Pleasant Valley Way.
So still it's limited to five. So what, can you tell me what an electronic amusement device is?
Video game.
Yeah, any type of video.
And you can.
Pac-Man.
In in like a bar or something like that, yeah. They don't want you to make, it's not like.
To an arcade.
Right. You can revise it, and that's why we're doing this. We're updating what we wanted.
Yeah, like.
How many? You want to have twenty?
I mean, I want to have a game room for the kids. I mean.
Yeah, that's not the wrong.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I mean, we've never really won any requests for that, but yeah.
It again, it may be limited by state statute.
Yeah.
It's not cited in here, but a lot of these things are regulated by state statute. You can't go beyond the state statute.
All right, so can, I I I just want to make sure I note this.
Yeah, noted.
Certainly, I will bring it back.
Um, Dave and Buster's would be nice.
Absolutely. That's what we're going. That's what we're going. When we talk about opportunities for different types of businesses, that's where that brought my, that franchise, that would be nice. Absolutely, that's why, exactly, I'm, that's why I'm. I'm, we talked about, we talked about this. That's why this came to, absolutely. Okay, moving on, I'm sorry.
Need a second on that one.
Second. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven fifty seven dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section eleven point one of the revised general ordinance of the township of West Orange, coin operated business license required.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes.
Excuse me, quick question. Does that refer to the coin machines and that the banks have too?
Or no, that's like a laundry mat.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Twenty seven fifty eight dash twenty three and ordinance amending section five, section ten point four of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, outdoor cafes.
Cease. Some of. Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven fifty nine dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section thirteen point two of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, garage sales license required fee.
Some of. Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven sixty dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section seventeen point three of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, dealers and secondhand jewelry and position precious metals license fees expiration of license.
Some of. Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, and just confirming, this is like pawn shops?
Yes, so like Walter Bowmans does, you know, gold, gold sale, or you know, they. Yeah, buy and sell that type of thing.
Okay, thank you. But we don't have any pawn shops in West Orange, to my knowledge, correct?
Not that I know of.
Okay. All right. Um, twenty seven sixty dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section seventeen point three of the revised general ordinance of the township of West Orange, dealer, oh, I just did that, right?
Uh-uh.
Well, you said, you're reading the right one, but it's twenty seven sixty one is the number.
Right, twenty three, licensing of contractors.
It's license fees and and term.
Right.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael. Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven sixty two dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section twenty two point four of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, licensing of public telephones, license fees and terms. I have a question.
Some of.
Second.
I have a question soon.
Do we have any and where are they located?
Yes, I was just, I was just, I was just going to say, chief, can you look at, there's one on.
I know where they're.
Pleasant Valley Way and Eagle Rocket Avenue. It's got graffiti on it. I'm not sure if it's anything that we have to worry about, but.
By the old market.
I'm tired of looking at.
Public telephone.
Yeah, and that little strip.
Yeah.
And Ms. Broll noted a few of them. She's been trying to get rid of downtown soon.
Okay.
Okay, let me do a roll.
You want to, I'm going to just ask, I know that um we're saying that we need to put in writing all the requests, so just like.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Please follow up with an email so that he can address that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven sixty three dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section twenty five point four of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, massage businesses, application fees.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, and our downtown business owners were happy that we modified the massage.
Modified it, yes.
Twenty seven sixty four dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section twenty four point five of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, news vending machines, conditions for permit, hold harmless insurance required.
Some of. Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven sixty five dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section thirty one point eleven of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, alarm systems violations and penalties.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino. Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Twenty seven sixty six dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section twenty seven point four of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, licensing and registration of tree care professionals.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven sixty seven and ordinance amending chapter five, section thirty two point six of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, police requested towing and storage services fees.
Some of.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven sixty eight dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section thirty three point six of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, licensing fee for shop local rewards programs, application and license fees.
Some of. Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven sixty nine dash twenty three and ordinance amending chapter five, section fifteen point three of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, distribution of papers and other printed materials.
Some of. Second.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Councilwoman Scarpah, Council President Williams.
Yes, twenty seven seventy dash twenty three and ordinance amending and supplementing chapter twenty five through twenty nine, storm water control subsection twenty five dash twenty nine, one C applicability, subsection twenty five dash twenty nine point two definition and subsection twenty five dash twenty nine point three design and performance standards for storm water management, measures of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange.
Some of. Second.
I I do have a question. I understand it may not be answered tonight, but wanted to know uh in the uh the bottom of page two, section three, subsection C. Number one says, storage, storm water management facilities shall be designed to manage three inches of rainfall on all new impervious surfaces and meet the standards for groundwater runoff, recharge runoff quantity and green infrastructure. I I understand that that, that these, this entire section is in addition. So does that mean that there was no minimum standard before?
Not on this. There were, there were other, other ways of constraining a property from being overdeveloped.
Okay.
This is yet another. So, so there was no, so for instance, if um if you were coming and you're going to put a big pool in and get rid of all your um.
Grass and.
Grass and whatever it is, you know, if it it doesn't, it didn't matter, as long as you you had the perc- percentage of pervious service or surfaces, it was okay. What this now says, anything you displace, you got to make sure stays on your property. So that's, that's, that's the difference on this.
New construction only.
So for, for a better understanding of all of, because you know as well as I do, and I appreciate your uh involvement in trying to address some of the flooding issues in multiple neighborhoods in town, right? I I appreciate the entire administration's effort, including our uh engineer, to get a fuller understanding of how all of these things work together. Is it better to pose those questions to you or to the engineer?
Don't you come next meeting?
Well, I think if 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 you pose the questions to me, I will get you the questions. I.
Okay.
We like the idea, the administration likes to be the central, um, that way we can give it to wh- whomever it is and whatever. There may be nuances. It might be more than one. There may be aspects of the question that have to go to two different places. So rather than, 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 than send it, if you, if you send it to me, we'll get the answer.
You got it. Thank you.
And I know, Councilman, you'll put it in writing.
Yes.
And 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 just, just to elaborate on that also, so if you're not satisfied with the answer, you can always request the council president to request that the engineer, the director to come into the meeting. So we can have that back and forth dialogue that went title to.
Absolutely, thank you.
But that, that should be after we trimmed the, the time down a little bit.
Right, not at twelve o'clock.
Um, and so the, the follow up question that I had before we moved into pending matters, new matters and council discussion, um, understanding that this is only the first reading, but that our ordinances do go into effect immediately upon um approval. We don't have any of the fees.
You will. Let, when we did this the last time, at the same time, we had resolutions on set, just setting the fee exactly where they are now, because during the budget process, we'll talk about this directly, you know, on mass.
So we don't anticipate an increase in fees immediately, but it will be forthcoming?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
Yes.
Thank you. And then also um for the public, when we do put the new fees in place, how will the public be notified? Will those new fees um be only implemented upon renewal of these um current license fees? Will those new fees, um, be only implemented upon renewal of these, um, current license fees?
It, yeah, it, it's not gonna, anybody, anything that's already done is done. So, uh, that, that's, uh, we'll only act, moving forward, either anything new coming in or upon renewal.
And so that also means that the anticipated increase in revenue from increasing these fees might not necessarily take impact until twenty twenty four?
Well, let's, let's be clear that, that whatever we're doing this year is going to have an impact this year, but its bigger impact is going to be next year.
Okay.
And that, that's, that's a key point to keep in mind.
All right.
So, so, so we'll get some impact out of this year, but the major impact will be, and, and everything we're gonna do about this budget will be, will impact next year more, and that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Uh, pending matters.
I didn't take a vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carpa, Council President Williams.
Yes.
And just so everyone knows, on twenty seven seventy dash twenty three, uh, it's a chapter twenty five ordinance, so it does have to go before the planning board, so it will not be heard at the next meeting on second and Friday.
And the next planning board meeting, do, does it have time, do you have time to notice that properly? The next planning board meeting is next week?
Uh, well, it depends on if they can get it on their agenda.
And they normally require ten days to get it on their agenda. Is that not correct?
Yeah, unless it's emergent.
Okay.
So, so I'll speak to her tomorrow.
Okay, no problem.
She says.
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion, is there a motion to put the revised ordinance for cannabis, um, back on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
I need a motion from the floor.
Yeah, I motion to put, yeah.
I, I'm not trying to be smart aleck about the, do, do we, is it clear which ordinance for?
Yeah.
So, I'm just going to, and, and just so everybody knows, I just make individual phone calls trying to expedite this and it, it was really hard because everybody had, trying to incorporate changes. And then Bill and I, uh, kept, assuming Councilman, we kept missing each other and then he went directly to Councilwoman Scarp. So with that, um, being said, as long as it's what we
It's everything we've read upon.
Impression, I need a chance to read it. I will read it tomorrow, so as long as it's what I anticipate, yes, I will be a yes. But for any reason, it's not, I don't, uh, I'll.
Okay, so how do we handle that, um, legislatively? Because what you're saying is yes, but, and what we need is a clean yes vote. So do I have?
We have a motion to put, a motion to put it on that she circulated.
Last night.
In our inbox, well, I saw it.
The last one.
Yeah. One that went through today.
The last, yeah.
Okay.
I saw it.
So it, it needs to go to the legal department as well?
I'll, I'll look at it.
Who said, I sent it to Karen, I sent it to legal.
I, 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 I understand. I'm just letting you know the process because it needs to still go through the legal department, so.
And it's going to my office as well.
Yes, okay. And it also has to go to Mr. Gross. So please make sure, just please make sure.
Send it tomorrow morning.
Resend it, absolutely. Please resend it tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So that it's very clear after we have agreed to upload it, that the correct version, everybody is looking at the correct version.
And I'll notify the clerk, uh, of my.
Right.
If I grab.
Okay.
I'll do it first thing in the morning.
All right.
Or is everyone in favor of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, can we select the date?
I'm not ready to select a date for the hearing until we get a, an org chart. I'm sorry.
So question, um, so there's two dates we're gonna need, because obviously, we're gonna have the workshop.
Right, and then we need one with the directors to come in.
And, and then, we're, well, then a third day, because I'm gonna request, okay, so going by the number of residents, which I think is great. So I'm not saying this for any other reason, I think when we have the budget to vote, it should be a separate meeting. We're gonna, I mean, this is like, we get snippy with each other, that doesn't help, not that everybody's doing it intentionally, but we're all tired, we all worked during the day. And, and you guys, you know, you're, you start early in the morning. So I, judging by the amount of comments, and we know a miracle isn't gonna occur, and we're gonna get a bag of money. There's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna wanna comment, and that's when they're gonna be able to comment.
They want to comment during the budget hearing, when we are.
No, no, not our workshop. Well, that's a workshop, that's a workshop that we will, you know, that's our time, that's our time. For that.
So if I can just, we've done, the, 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 the order that charts usually come after the budget. So I will have it to you no later than Friday, um, so you can count on that.
Okay, thank you. And then on Fri- and I, I would, I want, I want two weeks. You all wanted two weeks, I want two weeks after we get, or we can do it. We can set it next time, but.
Can I ask you a question about the statutory dates? So, so aren't there some dates dictated by the state by when we have to have our budget adopted?
Where there's fees or something like that. He always does.
We, we, there are, when it, when it comes to these deadlines, they're soft deadlines, um, they're not hard deadlines. Um, certainly, if we're not introduced by the middle of, of, of June, we'll get a letter from the state saying you need to introduce your budget. And.
So, so we're not in any da- any danger of missing a deadline now?
Well, there is a deadline.
What is the deadline?
I, I, I'm gonna say that I think you should try to schedule, especially considering that this may take multiple meetings. I would suggest that you schedule the first meeting as soon as possible.
I think so.
You're not, you're not gonna get a letter, not gonna get a letter from the state.
If we get the, if we get, uh, what I don't want to happen is that we end up canceling it again because we don't have all the information. So if, if we, if there's a commitment to have organizational chart to us on Friday, that leaves us with two weeks. Um, Friday, Friday is May.
Nineteen.
May, Friday is May fifth.
Can, can we talk a little bit about the organizational chart? You, you, if you look, if you look at the, when you look at the budget, the breakdown, there is all the positions. The only thing you don't have, I'm, I'm, I'm just suggesting, the only thing you don't have is who reports to.
Yes, and that is.
So you, so you have all the, all the people in there. So, I mean, I don't know if, whether, I mean, I would, I'm, I'm gonna urge you to think about you probably don't need two weeks to, to absorb the org chart. Um, but I'm.
I have a question with the org chart. Will you dictate who's a municipal officer on there?
I'm sorry?
Will you notate who is a municipal officer on there?
Their position, it's not my name, it, it'd be naming.
Yeah, they're, I'm just.
And then open position will say open.
Name inside.
And then the other request I had, um, as, as far as the budget is concerned, we have a tremendous amount of open positions. And they haven't been filled, and we know that some positions have not been filled for three years in a row, i.e. the economic development director. Is it possible for us to see a copy of the budget without any of the open positions in them?
Well, in, in terms of, in terms of, um, employees, there is a column that I included, uh, which is just all promotions and open positions. So that column on every, every page of employee pla- page is already broken out. So you have that. In terms of, of positions, uh, in the OE side, I mean, I'll look at it, but I don't think there's anything else other than that one, but I'll look at that.
Thank you. Okay, so go back to the calendar.
Okay, so question first, Council President, I'm sorry. So I had also on my, in writing, asked for the libraries.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna have, I'll have everything that you.
Because I wanted to see what their prediction.
I will have everything to you by Friday, if not before.
And, um.
And, and whatever I send, I'm not gonna send.
To everyone.
You, yours, and you, whatever I send.
Because there's one thing that I didn't write on there, because I felt my list was long enough for the weekend, but, um, I, so let me just get this clear, are you going to take anything out of this budget before we meet at the workshop? You're not, you're not gonna scale it back at all?
I, I know, I know there's a thing that like, that I've got this, this magic, and I, you know, and I admittedly, I've always have had the magic. But the truth is, and, and I've been, been trying to tell council that this was coming. And, you know, the, do, do we, are we in a situation where we're out of cash, we don't have any reserves? No, we have some reserves. You can apply those reserves, but if you apply those reserves, you are really only just pushing this to next year. And you have to commit to a tax increase or some.
Okay, but then you gotta do better than that. So what you need to do is, and I, what I mean better by that is, is what does that numerically mean? Does that mean if we, the revenue stays exactly the same, if we get increased revenue? So what we need to know is at sixteen percent, what is that per household?
Yes.
Per, per year? And if we take out a hea- a half million dollars, how, a million dollars, how much does that take down that payment?
Sure, absolutely.
I, you know, again, and please find out the school district where they're at with theirs. You know, um, will they have an, a, an estimate? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't get the A four yet.
Yeah, and, and just, just so everybody knows, we haven't gotten a nickel in state aid, I think since I've been here in two thousand and fifteen. So it's, has stayed flat, you know, where the school district, you're hearing, oh, West Orange get all this money, it's not coming to us. It's, it's going to the school district, and, and so ours has been flat, so our, you know, like anything else, you know, our, our, our cost increase. But our state aid has not increased, so.
Okay, so if we were to have all of our documents by Friday, the fifth, um, can everyone make, the eighteenth, maybe the eighteenth, that's a Thursday, I don't think it, we need to do a budget on Friday night?
No, I'm not doing.
So can we do Thursday, the eighteenth for the first hearing?
Yeah, that works, at six P M. Yeah, that works.
Just so you know, the zoning, um, they do it virtual, but their meeting is at night. I don't know if that, who, so.
Um, so does the visitor is on the.
You can watch it on, you can watch it on tape.
That's the eleven.
That's the eleven.
Well, if, oh, they're doing it virtual, so they're not gonna be here.
Correct, but I just.
But so now they're, a zoning meeting on the eleventh and the eighteen.
It's probably a special meeting.
Yeah, if I did too.
Yeah.
Should we do the seventeen?
Probably.
So, um, we're going, just, just to be clear, we're going to, to transmit. We'll, we'll need Mr. Fagan that night.
Yes. Absolutely. This will be a live without any public comment.
So the. Mr. Fagan will be available on the eighteenth, I'll be doing the. Okay.
Thank you, at six P M, right?
Well, our problem with finding the substitute is our main substitute's gonna be doing the zoning.
Yeah, that's Megan.
On the zoning board that night.
Okay, so.
That means Megan.
Does that mean, does that mean our other substitute, our other is not available?
That's correct.
We'll look at what alternatives we have.
All right, thank you. And even if we have to outsource it, I think there are plenty of people who can be outsourced, we just have to be willing to do it.
Are we just going to schedule that one? Because I think last year it took us thirteen hours or so, is it?
No.
No, not last. Last year, we did it one night.
Well, well, that.
It was like a, it was like, I was like, two, three in the morning.
That, that, that was on Zoom, and we had the directors there. And then there was a year that I think Councilwoman Two Brown, we didn't even, we didn't have the directors at them, then we, we didn't have the directors.
We had directors last year, or the year before.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, but the eighteen hour meeting is a two top.
No, not eighteen, I thought last year, then we had two sessions in total, eight, thirteen, I only did one.
Yeah, last year was quicker.
I don't know why I got that. Okay, so eighteenth at six P M.
Yes, yes.
In the event we can't get a video or Zoom person, should we have?
We'll get one. I have two recommendations.
We used to do it Saturday all day. I mean, that's another.
I'm open for Saturday all day too.
I mean, I can't do the six, I can do the.
Not on the twentieth.
Right, the twentieth won't work for our colleague, the twenty seventh is Memorial Day weekend.
June third is the fair, street fair.
Yeah, so we, the eighteenth is when we need to really get this done. All right, so we're committed to the eighteen, six P M.
So you bring the directors in that night?
No. We need to have another meeting and bring the directors in.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I.
So we have a tight schedule. On the sixteenth. If we come in on the eighteen, um, we could perhaps have the directors in on Tuesday, the twenty third and the twenty fourth. Can we check and make sure council chambers are available?
It is, I'm looking at the calendar here.
On the twenty third and the twenty fourth, let's do the, um.
I prefer the twenty fourth.
Let's do the Wednesday, the twenty fourth.
Okay.
For the directors. Mr. Gross, you'll have the directors here? Mr. Gross.
I'm sorry.
You'll have the directors here on the twenty fourth. Can we work together to complete the schedule? Because when the directors come in, um, council colleagues, we wanna make sure that we do not have them, we wanna create a schedule so that they're not here all, um, and that they can come in, so it, it will be pretty much, a- and I don't wanna be dismissive of anyone's inquiries or questions. Um, but I do want us to try and maintain that schedule so that perhaps we give each director, um,
so that we give each director anywhere from twenty to twenty-five minutes, um, for us to ask questions of them. Usually we will have the same questions, so once someone asks, asks a question, it's usually a question that all of us have.
Fifteen minutes, there's a lot of.
Yeah, yeah.
Fifteen.
I would say fifteen minutes.
Okay.
And, and we're gonna do the directors, so it, it is, a- as opposed to the directors and o- other, um, other staff. Right, so there's nine, nine directors.
Nine, okay.
Yeah.
Can I make a recommendation? So, because this is always so painful, this process, um, especially because, like, why don't we just do, schedule half the directors the first Thursday? Because as we go along and you ask your questions, we usually vote on that section to see if you're good with it or not. And then we move on, so if you divide up, like, have the directors there, because I don't see the point of having them ask questions, because you need the, sometimes, they may need, they may or may not need the director's input.
They, 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 conceptually, the idea was to get and roll through and, and get the, the, a full understanding of the budget itself and, 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 and hopefully, eh, you know, s- get some decisions made along the way. And then to, to the extent that there were anything outstanding, the directors could come in and, 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 and you could ask director, directors any questions that you wanted to, as well as what always happens, and, and, and what has happened historically, is the, the topics end up generating away from the budget. Because they wanna know about the programming and things, and, 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 and it's, it's just, it's interesting discussion, budget related, but interesting discussion. So the idea was that, that if we, it came in, had the second meeting, that the, with the directors, it was, it was, um, less structured and, and, and you could let it run as you, where you wanted it to go. Whereas if we're doing it in the night, you're not gonna get it done with the directors in one night.
Right.
It's not gonna happen.
Right.
It's, it's just.
And it's just.
That's what I'm saying, break it into two.
Well, I, I want us to be able to, we have three, I, I continue to say four, because I, I mean, I, while you and I are two years in, three years in, I still think we were at a disadvantage doing this in a virtual capacity, not being able to be here, see, hear from, you know, the actual people who are doing this job day in and day out. Um, so I want us to have, I look at us as four, I want us newer people to have an opportunity to completely understand what we're doing and then go back and ask the directors any questions that we may have. Thank you.
Okay. So what is the conclusion?
On the twenty fourth.
Only.
Wednesday, the twenty fourth for the directors.
And the twenty fourth.
Eighteen.
It may be, they may not need all the directors if they're good with certain sections.
And we may decide that, so then on the twenty fourth, we don't have to invite them back. But right now, make sure all the directors are prepared to come in for the twenty fourth, and we can identify a schedule so that they know what time to come, and they're not here all night.
So we're not breaking it into two separate sessions as Councilwoman suggested, we're gonna do it all in one night?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's two nights, it's two nights.
I think her issue though was the ability to kind of really flesh it out with the directors and not, and space that out over two nights. I mean, I could be misunderstanding what she was suggesting.
Was you do each section as you go along and then have half of them come in the, on, because usually not even half, like usually the biggest sections that take the longest from doing this along, and Chief knows this, is usually police and fire. And recreation are, are the longest, that are, that usually everybody else is pretty quick. So, again, like, but I, listen, I defer to you guys, like, take it to my.
I think that's a good idea, I mean, to both of, actually to all of the commentary, it's all kind of hinting at the same thing, I just think we kind of, it's late and.
Okay.
You know.
I have a question, for the sake of residents who, after they have a long work, workday and kids and activities, I really think we should look at a Saturday, can we do the second one on Saturday, June tenth? Is that okay? I'm just trying to think about the residents, you know?
I mean, I don't, I'm, 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 I'm not against the Saturday, I mean, I, I, I.
It's just hard with.
I think. You start scheduling June, you're not done till July.
Yeah, exactly.
So to Councilwoman Castellino's point, um, echoed in other ways with other people, we should likely break it up into two, which would mean inviting at least two or three of the directors to the eighteenth, unless I misunderstood the intent.
You don't know where you're gonna, you don't really know where you're gonna get bogged, not bogged down, but you know, you're not.
Questions.
But, you know, questioned on it.
Right, so.
I think, I, a couple of times that we did it, I thought it went better, the best of, of since I've been here, Was where we did the, you know, we we went through, went through the budget and and that way you've now, you know. Kind of settled in on on understanding the budget, but if you have outstanding questions, then you bring them in. And and that doesn't mean you can't retalk about some of the stuff that you that you decided in the previous meeting in the next meeting. It's just if you, it it worked, um, it's worked so well, much better than when we, when we brought them in, it was.
They sit around and they they are frustrated and I've I've heard.
I've heard.
I know, I appreciate the schedule. I think that's important, but I I wanted to have enough time to get through all of them without.
But we may not even need all of them. So I think if we flush it out, then we may identify that some of the department heads may not even have to come back. And so if we've asked them to come and we don't need them, I think that's a poor use of their time and they get frustrated.
Uh, well, if the council wants to do it on the twenty fourth, that's fine. I.
Not all, we're gonna do it on the eighteen, and then the directors come back on the twenty fourth.
Okay, I mean, that I'm talking about all of the directors on the twenty fourth, and that's, if that's what the council wants, then you know, fine.
Let's do it that way.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Well, wait, I do have another new matter.
Okay.
Council discussion. I really would like to add and not to exceed in our in our contracts, so that way we know what spending is happening and have an idea to keep tracks.
So I hope we had that in most of our contracts, and lately it seems like one or two didn't happen.
We we used to have it in a lot of contracts and and it was taken out because it was a pain in the butt, because you always had to make the change. It 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 forced people to come back and and changes to be made, additions to be made, and if nobody wanted that at that point.
It was nobody.
Hmm, I think we.
I thought we want to understand the spending.
Okay.
Oh, I'm I'm just telling you the history. That's my recollection.
Appreciate.
So, so do we need a a motion or is that something we can ask be done in our in our upcoming contract?
I think you, I think you should just ask that moving forward.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Any, uh, you assume you're talking about uh professional service contracts?
Yes.
That that they included not to exceed.
Okay, so Madam.
Otherwise, they're not gonna approve.
Right, Madam Clerk, can you note for the record, um, a few things that we've asked for, so we'll just reiterate them all. That when we do get any uh ordinances, that we receive the RFPs and RFQs, the contracts as well as, I'm sorry?
Resolutions.
Resolutions, um, RFPs, RFQs, as well as the resumes for the professional service vendors. Okay, and then we also want to see language in all of our professional services contracts that include language that says not to exceed. Moving forward.
Resumes?
Well, the good, the good.
Resumes, yes.
The good news, the good news is, uh, we started engaging with the Pervonics people. Uh, and in in terms of doing the document imaging, and part of that will be departments moving forward. Once we get implemented, will then everything, the new stuff will all be scanned in and be available. So so like the RFPs and RFQs and all the background, we'll be, we'll be scanning them in, and then we can just make them accessible to you. So it won't even be that we're gonna send it to you. It will be electronic. Uh, and I know that that, you know, to the extent that that may mean, you know, um, you know, paper and and printers uh that that you might need.
Well, if you would have increased our salary, maybe we could get some printers and we wouldn't have to depend on you all.
Tax increase?
I didn't say today.
But I mean, you know, people just take pennies on the dollar.
But but my point is, all this, a lot of your stuff's gonna be available to you, me, just just because it's out there.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments, concerns, questions, motion to adjourn? So, West Orange, this is meeting eleven of the town council. Our next meeting is on May sixteenth, beginning at six thirty P M for our conference agenda. Thank you so much for your patience, your indulgence and your attention. Have a great night. Thank you.
And I, West Orange.
And and please, can you advertise?